Good morning again, and welcome to our public hearing and public meeting. We've had technical difficulties this morning, and so we appreciate everyone's patience as we resolve them. And just in case we didn't catch this in the beginning, we're going to start from taking attendance, and I'll turn it over to our general counsel, Mark Silbermann, to call the role.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen. Commissioner Chu. Commissioner Ginsburg.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Luthfi. Commissioner Master.
And welcome again to our public hearing and public meeting of March 11. This meeting is being held in our hearing room at One Center Street on the ninth floor. It's also being held via Zoom for anyone who would like to participate remotely, and it's being livestreamed on our YouTube channel. And this morning, we're going to begin this morning with a public hearing agenda from the Research Department to hold a public hearing on the proposed interior and individual landmark proposal for the Whitney Museum. And then we're going to move to a public meeting agenda to review applications for work on designated properties that have already had a public hearing and are back today with revisions in response to comments made at that public hearing. And then we'll move to our public hearing agenda to review new applications for work on designated properties. And with that, I will turn it over to Margaret Herman, our Director of Research.
Thank you. Good morning. Item number one is LP 2685, The Former Whitney Museum of American Art at 945 Madison Avenue, Manhattan, Block 1389, Lot 50. The item proposed for public hearing is a brutalist-style museum building designed by Marcel Breuer and Associates and built between 1964 and 1966. And item number two is LP 2686, The Former Whitney Museum of American Art Interior, 945 Madison Avenue, Manhattan, Block 1389, Lot 50. The item proposed for public hearing is the interior of the former Whitney Museum, a brutalist-style building designed by Marcel Breuer and Associates and built between 1964 and 1966, consisting of portions of the lower level facing Madison Avenue, the first-floor lobby coat check and entrance vestibule, and the main stairwell from the lower level through the fifth floor, which may include but is not limited to the floor surfaces, wall surfaces, ceiling surfaces, lighting fixtures, and attached furnishings. Presenting these items is Lisa Buckley. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Buckley from the Research Department. 945 Madison Avenue was home to the Whitney Museum of American Art from its construction in 1966 until 2014. It is a brutalist-style inverted stepped pyramid clad in granite and raw concrete on the Upper East Side of Manhattan, contrasting starkly with the surrounding 19th-century row houses. The building's interior juxtaposes polished and rough-faced surfaces with an emphasis on concrete as well as natural materials such as stone and wood. Commissioners, we will present the individual landmark proposal first and then move on to present the interior landmark proposal. The building is located at the corner of Madison Avenue and East 75th Street within the Upper East Side Historic District, designated a New York City Landmark District in 1981. The individual landmark site is defined by the tax lot. The museum was founded as the Whitney Studio in 1929 by sculptor Gertrude Vanderbilt Whitney to showcase contemporary and American artists, or contemporary American artists, including John Sloan and Reginald Marsh. Located in a series of buildings in Greenwich Village and later in a building adjacent to the Museum of Modern Art, by the 1950s, the Whitney Museum needed a more permanent home. The museum's trustees acquired property on Manhattan's Upper East Side and engaged Marcel Breuer and Associates to design a new museum. Completed in 1966, it was the first in New York City devoted exclusively to American art. Marcel Breuer trained as a carpenter at the Bauhaus in Weimar, Germany, between the World Wars, where he designed iconic furniture, including the still-popular Vasili chair. And subsequently, he served as a master of the school's carpentry program in Dussel. Breuer immigrated to the United States in 1937. As an instructor at Harvard and in a creative partnership with Walter Gropius, Breuer greatly influenced a group of young architects and by extension, the course of modern American architecture. After breaking with Gropius, Breuer went on to design notable buildings such as the New York City Individual Landmark Begris Hall, constructed between 1956 and 1961 at the former New York University campus in the Bronx, now Bronx Community College, the UNESCO headquarters in Paris in an overlapping time period, and in the late 1960s, the Armstrong Rubber Pirelli Tire Building in New Haven. Breuer embraced the emerging brutalist style in this period, characterized by exposed raw concrete with few decorative elements. Breuer explored the versatility of concrete as a building material, yielding unlikely shapes. The Whitney Museum's site originally contained six row houses, which were demolished before the Whitney acquired the parcel. At 100 feet by 125 feet, the relatively small lot required an innovative approach to space planning. Breuer joined the project after the site was selected and settled on an inverted pyramid form with each level slightly larger than the one it rests upon, creating a stepped cantilever on the primary facade. The heavy masonry building projects permanence and solidity while simultaneously appearing to float above a transparent glass ground floor revealing open floor plans with cast concrete furnishings and its ceiling adorned with modern lighting. Windows on the upper stories are placed seemingly randomly across the East 75th Street facade, and a singular trapezoidal window crowns the topmost overhang of the primary facade. Moving on to the interior, the landmark site includes portions of the lower level facing Madison Avenue, the first-floor lobby coat check and entrance vestibule, and the main stairwell from the lower level to the fifth floor. Breuer's approach to interior design was underpinned by his philosophy that a building should first and foremost be functional. He applied this approach to the many interiors he undertook, including his own residences and the interior of the UNESCO headquarters. In the case of the Whitney's interior spaces, this is expressed in open floor plans and in its unembellished concrete, wood, and stone materials palette. The museum's interior features rough-faced stone floors and distinctive overhead lights. The walls and built-in furnishings are built bush-hammered and board-formed to concrete, typical of the brutalist style. Breuer's preference was for indirect general lighting, as exhibited in the half-silver lighting in the lawn. The lower level features a dramatic double-height space divided by the exposed concrete entrance bridge above. The west elevation facing Madison Avenue is primarily glass, beyond which sits an outdoor sculpture court sunk in below the level of the sidewalk. Having outgrown its space, the Whitney Museum relocated to a new building in 2014. After the departure of the Whitney Museum, 945 Madison Avenue temporarily housed collections of the Metropolitan Museum of Art and subsequently the Frick Museum while their facilities underwent renovation. The auction house Sotheby's acquired the building in 2024. The building will continue to function as gallery spaces and will remain free and open to the public. The former Whitney Museum of American Art was one of pioneering architect Marcel Breuer's most prestigious commissions and is his only built work in Manhattan. The bold inverted pyramid not only broke with expected museum design, but it also established the identity of the Whitney Museum of American Art as one of the most significant and forward-thinking arts institutions in New York. Its dramatic multi-story lobby and lower level are defined by open floor plans, interconnected public spaces, and distinctive modern lighting materials and built-in furnishings. It is an enduring emblem of modern architecture inside and out. Because of its historical and architectural significance, the former Whitney Museum of American Art is proposed as an individual and interior landmark.
All right. Thank you very much. Before we move to any testimony, does the commission have any questions for Lisa or Margaret? Then we'll move to public testimony. We're going to start with the owner. So we're going to go to the Zoom first, but then we will come back. We'll take all speakers in the hearing room, and then we'll go back to the Zoom and take other remote speakers.
All right. Thank you. Steve Wrightson, I'll be promoting you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Good morning. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Stephen Wrightson. I am representing Sotheby's, who is the owner of 945 Madison Avenue. I just first wanted to start by saying how excited we are to make 945 Madison Avenue, i.e. the Breuer Building, our new home, and we look forward to welcoming the public back through the doors later this year. As you make your decisions and you listen to the public testimony today, it's just a few points that I would like for you to keep in mind and really reiterating what has already been presented today. So number one, we very much understand and we deeply appreciate the building's architectural significance, and we are committed to preserving its original character. I truly hope this has come across in all the various presentations that we've delivered to date. Because our use does differ from a typical museum, we will need to make some compatible modifications that are necessary for us to support its new use. We are working to strike a very careful balance that honors the history while keeping it a vibrant and functional space for the public to engage with the art. As previously mentioned, one of our top goals of this project is to continue having the building be available for public to view our very diverse range of arts and exhibitions. So we will continue the same usage as prior owners and stewards of this building. In fact, we will actually increase the amount of space that will be available for public view. On top of that, we will also be hosting educational opportunities, including lectures and panel discussions that are very much centered and focused around the arts and culture. So I will keep it short today. You've seen our presentations, and I just wanted to say thank you again for all the thoughtful views and comments throughout the process, and we do look forward to the next steps in the journey. So Sotheby's will respect the views of this commission as you go through the voting process. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair Carroll.
All right. We'll now move to the speakers who have signed up and are in the hearing room. We'll start with Zainab Turan.
Thank you so much. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Zainab Turan, speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. Since 1982, Friends has been dedicated to preserving the architectural legacy, livability, and sense of place of the Upper East Side, and therefore, we strongly support landmark and interior landmark designations for the former Whitney Museum of American Art building. Designed by Bauhaus master Marcel Breuer, this iconic structure is a beloved architectural and cultural space and has been a cornerstone of New York City's cultural life. New Yorkers and visitors alike share a strong attachment to this building, drawn from their personal experiences, memories, and its cultural significance making its preservation essential. Although the building's unique interior is protected within the Upper East Side Historic District, the interior spaces of the former Whitney Museum are integral to Marcel Breuer's architectural vision and warrant further protection. Breuer envisioned the museum as a total work of art. The interior's design, from the mesmerizing interplay of lobby and gallery ceilings to the lauded staircase, exemplifies this holistic approach. The building's interiors, functional, utilitarian, and strikingly beautiful, provide a unique opportunity within New York City to engage not only with the physical space, but also with the core tenets of modernism. Reflecting Marcel Breuer's Bauhaus training and teaching, these interiors offer a rare and invaluable experience of the beauty inherent in functional objects and the foundational principles of this influential design movement. In keeping with his vision of a total work of art, Marcel Breuer's design mastery is further exemplified in the building's unique urban integration, a deliberate effort to create a seamless transition between the city and the interior. This intention is vividly realized in the meticulous design progression from the street through the iconic concrete canopy, across the pedestrian bridge, and into the building's core. The lobby, staircases showcasing Simmons installations, lower levels and galleries, all contribute to a cohesive design narrative that is essential to New York City's architectural legacy. Therefore, I will echo my colleagues, you'll hear them soon, Mr. Grunwald and Mr. Arbuckle, encouraging this commission to extend the exterior designation or interior designation to include one, if not all, of the innovative gallery floors of Marcel Breuer. In closing, since its opening in 1966, the public has enjoyed uninterrupted access to this remarkable space. To guarantee the continuation of this access and to safeguard these interiors which hold local and international significance, representing a pivotal moment in modern design, we, Friends, advocate for their protection with Sotheby's as their responsible custodian. I have submitted a longer written version of this testimony via email. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Theodore Grunwald.
I'm Theodore Grunwald, founder of the Alliance to Save the Maggor Hill Lobby, an ad hoc advocacy group that sued the commission and Maggor Hill building owner in 2021 over LPC-approved demolition of Raymond Hood's exquisite, undesignated porcelain enamel lobby extravaganza of 1932. While ordinarily an occasion to celebrate, today's interior designation is inexplicably limited to the Breuer's Whitney's lobby, lower level, and main stair. This one-room-deep layer of spaces along Madison Avenue containing rooms dedicated to entry, dining, and circulation, while essential excludes the rooms, which are the raison d'etre of the former Whitney and the culmination of the museum's promenade architectural, its three upper-floor galleries eloquently expressed by the three cantilevered step setbacks along the Madison Avenue exterior. The three gallery spaces on floors two, three, and four are singly and together a culmination in summary of Breuer's career from his early Bauhaus experimentation to his later focus on raw and prefabricated concrete, exemplified by his unique interpretation of a waffle slab, which rather than being structural as it is in a typical brutalist building, is instead suspended by hangers from each of the structural floors above. Breuer's unique prefabricated concrete suspended ceiling with its egg crate coffering that conceals building services such as HVAC above houses a grid of integrated track lighting, an innovative system designed by Edison Price and Carol Klein, which was the first of its kind. This unique combination of form, structure, material, and technology appears nowhere else in this building and in none of the demarcated areas of today's designation. The non-structural character of Breuer's drop ceiling makes this characteristic feature uniquely vulnerable to demolition, especially since every person in this room knows that spaces and features and fixtures, which are not explicitly included in an LPC designation, are legally exempt from protection, and nothing can prevent their alteration. While the public may speculate on the behind-the-scenes horse trading between former LPC counsel Valerie Campbell of Kramer Levin, who is representing Sotheby's, and the commission, which resulted in a deal that designates and protects just three atypical building spaces after all. This brutalist masterpiece is not known as the Whitney Lobby Restaurant or the Whitney Stair, but rather the Whitney Museum. One can acknowledge the impracticality of Sotheby's needing to apply to LPC every time gallery partitions are reconfigured. Breuer's innovative, beautiful egg crate ceiling facilitates easy reconfiguration and has proven remarkably effective for the exhibition of old masters, furniture, modern art, sculpture, and decorative arts. It worked for three of New York's most important museums and will work for Sotheby's. Landmarking at least, if I may just please finish the last sentence. There's two sentences. Landmarking of at least one, if not all, of the underlying superstructure, as the Broadway Theaters have been, will guarantee that the sublime emblematic spaces won't be modified in the future. And to conclude, the public is not reassured by Sotheby's January 28 application for a highly reflective entry canopy that was strongly penned by commissioners and advocates alike. Nor should the public take Sotheby's word on the galleries when their own CEO, Charles Stewart, stated in June 2023 that, quote, "This is a truly unique opportunity to reimagine an iconic and globally renowned landmark." In the words of critic Paul Goldberg, who responded to Stewart's words the same day, quote, "Paul, the visual definition, or the usual definition of reimagine is, quote, 'I will do as I please and make the disingenuous claim that it pays homage to the original.'" Thank you, and please discuss.
Thank you. And we'll move to John Arbuckle.
Yeah. Good morning, commissioners. I'm John Arbuckle, president of DOCOMO US, New York Tri-State. As a seminal work of architecture designed by Marcel Breuer, one of America's most important architects of the post-war era and his partner Hamilton Smith, and is the longtime home of one of New York's most prominent cultural institutions, the former Whitney Museum of American Art undoubtedly deserves protection as a designated New York City individual landmark and an interior landmark. My organization strongly and enthusiastically supports both proposed designations. The building is probably the best-known work anywhere by this Bauhaus master and certainly among the most significant works of modern architecture in New York. The building and its interior spaces are not only of local significance but of national significance and arguably also of international significance. In collaboration with DOCOMO US, our chapter submitted a request for evaluation on December 21, 2023, requesting that the commission consider designation. We subsequently established a coalition and obtained letters in support of our RFE from six other leading local, national, and state organizations, including Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts, who have just testified in support of designation, the Historic Districts Council, the Musplard Society, the New York Landmarks Conservancy, the Preservation League of New York State, and the Society of Architecture Historians National Heritage Conservation Committee. We also received the support of Community Board 8 Manhattan. The CB8 Landmarks Committee unanimously supported our request for support and presented a resolution to the full community board, which voted with more than 80% in favor to approve their resolution. The Community Board 8 encouraged Landmarks Preservation Commission to preserve interiors of 945 Madison Avenue through an interior landmark designation. We do regret that the interior landmark designation as currently proposed does not include any of the gallery spaces. We agree with the Community Board 8 resolution, which states on the gallery floors, the coffered ceilings, along with the window openings and the elevator and stairwell surrounds should be included in the designation. We encourage the commission to add at least one of the gallery floors to the areas that will be protected by interior designation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it back to Stephen Thompson so that we can continue with the remote participants.
Thank you. Our first remote participant is Andrea Goldwin. Andrea, I'll be promoting you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Good morning, Chair Carroll and commissioners. I'm Andrea Goldwin, speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. Just to note, there seems to be some problem with the video. It wouldn't let me join video, but that's fine. The Conservancy is pleased to support designation of the former Whitney Museum building as an individual and, excuse me, interior landmark. Marcel Breuer's 1966 building is well-known as a masterpiece of brutalist style for its striking inverted ziggurat massing and monolithic stone facade, all stark departures from the neighboring brownstones and brick apartment houses. The interior is also astonishing. It is an elegant composition of natural materials and minimal forms that is itself a work of art. They have formed a distinct background that held its own while showing collections of painting and sculpture as diverse as those held by the Whitney, Metropolitan Museum of Art, and the Frick, which all span centuries of artistic movements. A restoration focused on the interior received the Conservancy's Moses Award in 2017. At the time, we noted how the project celebrated Breuer's design intentions by preserving the authentic patina of natural materials and removing previous unsuccessful interventions. Signature attributes such as the concrete walls, bluestone floors, bronze fixtures, wood handrails, and the lighting array at the entry level were all restored. While the Landmarks Commission does currently have some regulation of this iconic building within the Upper East Side Historic District, additional protection and guidance from the LPC will ensure that those elements continue to align with Breuer's intent as new owners alter the building for a new use. We thank the commission for recognizing the significance of this building and urge a swift vote for designation. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Conservancy's views.
Thank you. Next, we will have Michelle Rossiop. I'll be promoting you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself. And you, okay, sorry, Michelle has unraised her hand, okay. And now has re-raised it. Okay, Michelle, you'll be next, please. And we are troubleshooting the video accessibility for remote participants.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Michelle Rossiop. I'm speaking on behalf of DOCOMO US. DOCOMO US supports the interior and individual landmark designations for the former Whitney Museum of American Art, designed by Marcel Breuer and Associates and constructed between 1964 and 66. At any point in its 60 years, this brooding inverted brutalist ziggurat in the heart of the Upper East Side could have been seen as too avant-garde or too daring to exist alongside its modest brownso neighbors. Instead, the former Whitney Museum is a beloved institution unto itself. Much was said at the time when it opened that Breuer had created a piece of art that may rival its exhibitions but never upstage them. It is a testimony to the design that in recent years, not one but three New York City cultural institutions have called the building home, and now the auction house Sotheby's will do so as well. In early 2023, DOCOMO US and our New York Tri-State chapter, with research assistance by Thomas Collins, set out to request interior designation, knowing that the ownership would change hands again. Two years later, DOCOMO US is pleased that the former Whitney Museum will be protected inside and out, and also that the building will be one of only a few buildings in New York that are designated as an individual interior landmark along with being recognized as a contributing property in a historic district. DOCOMO US agrees with the inclusion of all areas of the first-floor lobby, including the coat check area, entrance vestibule, and main staircase. While we recognize the need for exhibition space to remain flexible, we urge the commission to include the elevator surfaces on all floors as well as the ceiling grid on the gallery floors and the iconic trapezoidal window openings. Lastly, we would like to express our continued frustration with this process and the lack of proper and timely communication by the LPC. As the nominator of this proposed landmark, we would like to have received notice of the time and date of this hearing. Nominators and the public should be given more than two business days' notice of any public hearing. Our organization only became aware of this hearing at 6:00 PM last night, which gave us little time to consider our testimony for a building central to our mission and vital to the history of architecture in New York City. It is frustrating that there cannot be more transparency and collaboration by setting up a process of communicating actions in a timely manner via email to stakeholders. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will have Lucy Levi- Next, we will have Lucy Levine. Lucy, I'll be promoting you to panelist.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. As the citywide advocate for New York's architectural, historical, and cultural neighborhoods, the Historic Districts Council supports the designation of the former Whitney Museum of American Art as both an individual and interior landmark. Marcel Breuer's 1966 Whitney is an icon of brutalist architecture and the first museum in Manhattan devoted entirely to American art. Breuer, who trained as a designer at the Bauhaus, designed both the museum and its interiors, which work in tandem as an artistic whole. This synthesis of inside and outside reflects the German concept of Gesund Kunstwerk, a total work of art. The museum's mesmerizing system of lobby ceiling lights is echoed in its coffered gallery ceilings on the floors above. These two elements are connected by the museum staircase, which is widely celebrated as its own discreet work of art and has been lauded as one of the most stunning spaces in any 20th-century building. As a whole, the Whitney cannot be recreated and should be protected from unsympathetic alteration. Breuer's Whitney also stands out as worthy of designation because the building and its interiors allow visitors to be surrounded by a set of modern design ideas informed by Bauhaus principles. That's a rare experience in New York City and should be protected. We look forward to this designation and note that the former Whitney is one of many outstanding modernist structures and interiors in New York City worthy of designation, such as the Modulater Building, which LPC recently recognized. We thank LPC for its recent work on modernism and urge the commission to continue its evaluation and designation of modern architecture. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Sharad Paulson. Sharad, we ask you to unmute yourself and state your name for the record. I'll be promoting you to panelist now.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Okay, Sharad Paulson, Principal of PKSV Architects, and also former Chair of the Commission. And one of my proudest moments was being the one who led the charge to designate Begrish Hall. I am so pleased to support this designation as an individual landmark, and the interior designation as proposed is very important, I think, in looking at interiors to highlight what is most significant and most important to the public and to allow for new caretakers of the building to have the flexibility. I think all of the museums that have recently occupied the building have been creative in the way they have used the space. Sotheby's, with its careful displays, would no doubt echo that, and I support this as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. I will note that we have result of video functionality for attendees joining us remotely, so you are welcome to turn on your camera should you choose.
Sorry.
Okay, next, we will have John Graham. All right, John, you can speak now.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Graham, speaking for the Victorian Society in New York. The Whitney, constructed in 1966, is obviously outside the normal focus of the Victorian Society. But as we stated in January, when exterior changes were under review, we feel it part of our mandate to consider applications to important buildings of any era. We fully support the designation of the Whitney as an individual landmark and as a portion of these remarkably intact interiors. But we believe that the portion under consideration is just too small. The galleries, with their unique and elegant ceiling grid, slate flooring, trapezoidal windows, and lighting system designed by Edison Price and Carol Klein, are an integral part of the total work of art, the Gesund Kunstwerk Breuer created. These majestic spaces conceived as infinitely adjustable chambers for display were provided with a movable wall system, which has worked for the Whitney, the Met, and the Frick. We believe they can work for Sotheby's. We also believe that Landmark staff has the expertise to help the owners develop a master plan, which would allow for future adjustments without loss of important elements. The upper floors of the Whitney are icons of Madison Avenue, known to museum lovers around the world. They must be protected. We ask that no action be taken today and that the area under consideration for designation as interior landmark be increased to include the galleries on the upper floors. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. If anyone else is joining us remotely and would like to speak, please use the raised hand function. All right, seeing none, I'll return it to your chair.
I want to just address the comment about timing. And I do appreciate that this, that DOCOMOMO did submit a request for evaluation. I would note that requests for evaluations are not technically nominations. They are requests for evaluations, exactly just that. And the commission evaluates the material submitted and then makes a determination of whether something may merit or not, and if it may merit, it goes into the commission's inventory of survey items. And then all proposals are, of course, commission-led, and we bring them forward as we prioritize. And I want to just note, in terms of timing, we, by law, are required to notice our public hearings 10 days in advance, and in fact, we sent a notice at three weeks in advance. And so this has been on the agenda for three weeks, noticed in city record. And we also email that agenda out to a whole list of people who have signed up for notices. So I would urge anyone who's interested in getting our email notices to our agendas to sign up for that email, to reach out to Stephen Thompson. And we can get you connected so that you get those notices as soon as they're released. And again, for hearings, they are three weeks in advance. And so, if Commissioners, are there any other questions at this time? Commissioner Goldwin?
Given the uniformity of testimony, I think it's worth asking about the gallery spaces and whether they were considered or not, but they should be considered or not, why the decision was made not to. And I would ask this in the context of the gallery that we just designated an interior renovation for on Broadway, and the set of rules that apply to that and how that might, I don't know, affect consideration of designating gallery spaces here.
So, okay, I think I know which gallery you mean, 346 Broadway. Okay. Yeah, and I can...
...of Banking Hall.
Right.
And we made some rather unique regulations related to administering that space in light of the fact that it was gallery and wanted to make it relatively simple for the applicant to do what they need to do.
Right, and we did approve sort of a master plan for partitions to be moved in and out. And but what I would say is that, you know, the Landmarks Commission is highly selective when considering interior designations, and I think it's always a balance of functionality, flexibility, and preserving the most significant spaces. And the vast majority of interiors that we've designated in cultural institutions have included the main entryways, lobbies, and main circulation spaces. So, for example, the Metropolitan Museum of Art, the Museum of Natural History, even City Hall interiors. So that has been sort of a consistent pattern of the commission with respect to designations. And, you know, with the exception of 346 Broadway, the designations have been contiguous, you know, starting with the main entryway, going through the circulation spaces, and have been contiguous. 346 Broadway, a fairly early designation, was a little unique in that it was non-contiguous spaces, which also, I think, is, makes it even more challenging when it comes to regulation. So I think when we are looking at interiors, we do try to strike the right balance. And I don't know, Margaret, if you'd like to add anything else to that.
Yeah, first, I think...
Sorry, Margaret was going to answer, but go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah. I think, first, I want to say that I think the areas that have been chosen are terrific, you know. As a frequent visitor to the Whitney and later to the Breuer, these are really iconic, important spaces, and I think it's great. Listening to the testimony and also thinking about the spaces, I would like to see some, just another look at the ceilings in the galleries. I don't see designating the entire gallery because I think we really need the flexibility for adaptive reuse, for the space to be, you know, configured as it needs to be. But I think that you could, that those are, the ceilings are kind of a distinctive feature, and they could be preserved. And, you know, with some, we often allow, you know, like, changes for lighting and things which obviously would be important. You wouldn't, you wouldn't want to permit that as we do with something like the Apollo or something. I think, you know, I'd just like to see another look at the ceilings by themselves without, you know, you know, restricting what's going on in the gallery spaces. That would be my thought.
All right. We can ask Margaret to take a look at that. And I don't know, Mark, if there are issues with considering features in a room as opposed to a whole volume.
No.
Because I think the interior designation is about a volume of space and that the architecture and fixtures and finishes within that volume of space give it its distinct significance.
Right. It's always interior, but not definition of space, and I think that's what we have.
All right, but...
But Margaret was going to add something?
I wasn't going to add much, but just to echo what Sarah said. We have done a fair amount of study, substantial amount of study, on our interior designations. And particularly with cultural institutions, we have generally designated these most important publicly accessible entry lobby circulation spaces.
And we can, I think, when we come back for the public meeting, we can discuss it a little bit more. And, all right, so with that, we will close the hearing, and then we'll look forward to having that next public meeting when we will bring it back for a vote. All right, Commissioner, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Goldwin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed. Thank you all for participating, for your thoughtful comments, and we will be thinking about them and we'll address them further as when we come back at the next public meeting, which will be scheduled in the near future. All right, we'll now move to our Preservation Department public meeting agenda.
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning, everyone. We'll start today's Preservation Department agenda with public meeting item number one and two. I'll read them both in the record here, but they will be presented together as one proposal. First is public meeting item number one, LPC 25-04842, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 1917, lot 22, 221 Waverly Avenue in the Clinton Hill Historic District, currently a vacant lot. The application is to construct a new building. And public meeting item number two, LPC 25-04843, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 1917, lot 21, 223 Waverly Avenue in the Clinton Hill Historic District, also a vacant lot, and the application is also to construct a new building. These were, these proposals were last presented at the public hearing of December 17th, 2024, and no action was taken at that time. The staff will do a brief recap of comments before turning it back over to the applicant to present the revisions to the proposal after we open the proceedings.
All right, we'll do that right now so that that can be a seamless transition. So Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
I'll move.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ryan Zeke, Preservation Staff. These items were last heard at the public hearing and meeting on December 17th, 2024. The proposal is to construct new buildings at these adjoining lots. At the hearing, the Commissioners present generally supported the modern approach. However, they expressed concerns about these buildings' scale, both in terms of the overall scale and the hierarchy and proportions of the fenestration, the treatment of the ground floor and the mansard, and the materiality as they relate to the larger context of the block. The applicants are back with a revised proposal and are here to walk you through it.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Carolina Escobar, and I'm here to present 221 to 223 Waverly Avenue. Okay, so... So first, we updated the block context. We updated the collage to show that there's quite a few different typologies in the block. And in the, in the different streets around our property, and we're basically distilling the essence of the street. We're trying to bring all these elements to our project. Here, we have the existing submission on the left side, and this is what we are proposing on the right side. We basically, there was a concern about the ground, like, the base crashing into the, into the ground. So we started, we tried different things, and we end up with this option that it breaks, it breaks the different floors, but it's a cohesive facade. So we bring these elements. We, and we enlarge the first floor so it's not as short as we have in the previous presentation. We accentuated the angle in the mansard, so it creates different shades. And we shortened the mansard too, so it's less bulky than we used to have. We also changed the bulkhead material to a darker material, so it talks to the window frames and the metal elements that we have throughout the building. So it looks a little heavy than what we used to have. We also enlarged the windows to break the massing a little bit, so it feels a little lighter and less bulky. This is, again, the comparison with the two options. So basically, the idea is, we try different materials, but we end up with this version because we thought the angles, it's breaking the material and the bulkiness of the project. So the shadows throughout the day are breaking the massing. Instead of being like one big bulky building, the angles are bringing these, these breaks. Yes. Different, different views on the block, showing also the different times of the day with the shadows that we mentioned it before. And then we introduced, we added more information on the material itself. We added some reveals between the two, between the two buildings, because one of the comments were that we were missing details. So we have these, all these reveals between the buildings, the edges of the materials have the same metal that we have in the windows. We have real pictures of projects that use this material and the different corners and details. And yeah, I think that's, we, we cover, we try to cover all the comments.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions? Yes, Vice Chair Bland.
If I understand the detail around the window, it's a, it's a steel, blackened steel, is it, surround?
Aluminum. Yeah, we're doing aluminum.
Aluminum, okay. But blackened, and then.
Like a real color. It's dark.
That's all right. My real question is, how deep is it? In other words, how far back is the window recessed?
I think just an inch. There's just, so we want like a globe of separation off the facade, so it has like depth.
One inch?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, the window.
The, the window goes with the angle of the mansard, and then the.
I'm talking about the windows in the main part of the building.
Yeah, this, oh, okay. Let me go back to that.
So the setback is around seven, six inches, and then there's the extra inch of the extrusion.
Yeah, you, you can see it on the second image. That's a real picture of, of the trim and the window itself. So because the trim sticks out like one inch of, of the material, plus the seven inches, it ends up being like eight inches recessed.
Okay, thanks.
All right, other questions? All right, so I'll just note for the record that this is a public meeting. We've already had the public hearing and took testimony and gave you comments after listening to the presentation and the testimony. So there is no, this is not a hearing today. There is no verbal test, testimony, but we do always allow written comments to be submitted in advance of a public meeting item, to have those letters shared with the Commissioners. So I'll note that we did receive letters in opposition from the Victorian Society of New York, Society for Clinton Hill, Citizens for Responsible Neighborhood Planning of Clinton Hill, Fort Greene, Preserve Our Brooklyn Neighborhoods, Fort Greene Association, and Nine Individuals. Those were all shared with the Commissioners in advance of today's hearing. All right, so do we want to, are we ready for our discussion? I think the last time we saw this, as was stated, we thought that the, the design approach in a contemporary design was appropriate in this context. And, but the Commissioners did have some concerns about the overall scale, partly because it's two buildings and wanting them to be distinguished and not read as one large building in this context. But also the sort of overall scale within the context of the streetscape, and then the scale of the elements within the facade, and particularly at the ground floor, the proportions and relationship to the sidewalk was an issue that was raised, as well as the hierarchy of the window openings. And finally, there were questions about the materials, in particular at the mansard, and whether those should be changed or have a line that's more prominent or a different material at the mansard. And so the applicants have revised the proposal today. They've revised the ground floor and how those entrances relate to the streetscape. They've increased a reveal in between the two buildings and changed the proportions of the mansard relative to the windows, as well as the slope of the mansard. So we'll begin our discussion. Vice Chair Bland, would you like to start this one? I think your biggest issue last time was the ground floor and how it addressed the sidewalk.
Thank you. Maybe I first want to just address, since we've just listened to testimony from the Breuer masterpiece, which was highly unpopular when it was built, and now it's revered. I'll just note that it's not an unusual situation, actually, for contemporary architecture in historic districts. But it's always upsetting to me when a whole round of neighborhood associations and neighbors dislike something that comes before us and that I might even here in a minute say I like. So therefore, skating out on thin ice perhaps. And I, I hope the architect is not offended by the fact that I'm not equating you to Marcel Breuer either. But, but I think this is a very interesting approach, and I said so, I think, the last time around. In terms of, I mean, there are many ways one could have looked at this, including two very different buildings side by side. That could have been a very interesting approach and might have gathered more community support. But, you know, brownstone Brooklyn was, was made often by developers making rows of, of identical buildings, sometimes eight, 10, 12 in a row even, certainly two or three in a row. And this scale's not unusual. And I think that's kind of the purpose of this design, is to recall the, the brownstone Brooklyn typology. Yes, many of those had stoops, et cetera, et cetera. But this is a contemporary building with accessible entries and so forth. I think what has been changed for much the good is the ground level. It, it is a contemporary way of entering a building, but I, I think it's now done enough for me in terms of recessing, shadows, et cetera, to distinguish it as a, as, as an appropriate street, street front. I asked a question earlier about the, about the recessed windows. I think eight inches, if, if it is eight inches, is probably adequate, but the rendering makes it look perhaps too thin. So any, if any, little bit more, I think, would be, would be appropriate. I, I find the material to be very interesting. I think the fact that the mansard and the, and the, and the, and the straight flat wall are the same material as a, as a contemporary design motif that is, to me, fascinating. And I think the, the windows up at the top, the hoods, seem to be correct. So I don't think I'm finding anything inappropriate with this. I would think that the windows, a little more recessed on the, on the second and third floor would be useful.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, yeah. I agree with Commissioner Bland. We often, you know, we are often confronted with more contemporary designs. And I do think that that's appropriate when you're looking at a new building. You don't necessarily want an imitation of what's there so that people think, oh, yeah, this is just another, you know, it was there originally. So, you know, I, I'm sympathetic to, you know, approving more contemporary buildings in these contexts. And I agree with the remarks he made about, you know, trying to recall the sense of the brownstone. Obviously, it's nothing like them, but it's an attempt to kind of present a bit of an echo, I think. I think that the changing the color on the bulkhead is a good idea. And I think that the changes they've made to the mansard and to the street level to stop it from that sense of just sort of, you know, as she, as it was said, crashing into the base are appropriate. And, and, you know, the, in, in the larger windows as well. I think all of those things actually have improved the design as a contemporary design. And I agree that the material is appropriate. You know, I can improve it as presented, and certainly I could go along with the suggestion that Commissioner Bland made about the depth.
Thank you, Commissioner Latifi.
Yeah, I happen to be in agreement with Commissioner Bland's thoughts and also Commissioner Chapin's. You know, at the beginning, I, I, I think the applicant has made some moves that have improved this. I, I just want to sit back a minute and say, this project's gonna fill a gap in the landscape, and that's a very important thing. And as we've heard, we, we do approve modern designs in historic landscapes as long as they somehow, as long as the design fits in some way and speaks to what's here. And I think the applicant has done a good job through the tweaks that they've made to reinforce from a design perspective and, and almost echo some of what's there by pushing the, the, the roof back just a bit more and slanting it. I think it kind of speaks a little bit more to the mansard roof without, you know, coating it in a different material and, and just being very obvious, which would take away from the design intent. I also, I had a problem with the way this building hit the floor. And I think this was a very good solution. And in fact, I think it's kind of clever in a way because a, a lot of these buildings here have large openings. Carriage houses have large openings at the bottom. And so this is kind of like a, you've done it with, you've spoken to it by using negative space, and I, I can appreciate that as well. I also remember the feeling, and I, I looked at this photograph on, number on page 13, that the massing really was not out of scale with what's here. And if you look at this building and its position next to the corner building, it's actually much smaller. So I, I, I think that, oh, I do want to also say, I think the change to the bulkhead was a smart idea because it reduced the sense of too much mass at the top. And I think Fred's suggestion about the windows is also a very good idea.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree completely. I think that the building's a real interesting, really interesting design. And it's, it's, it's a design that's trying to basically turn what's basically a language of facade into an object that's really looked at from all sides. And to kind of, you know, in historic districts, the, the emphasis on facade is very strong. Traditional buildings are about facades. You know, the, the side walls are, are not part of the composition. They're, 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 they're background, they're filler. Here, by, by marrying the materials, by taking advantage of the fact that on one side you have a backyard, so that at least one of the two facades will always be visible. And by using a, a material that can function both as roof and wall, front and side, there, there, I think they're successful in, in making an object building that works in a facade world. And this block's particularly appropriate for that, I think, because of its unique variety. We've seen a bunch of projects on this block in the last year or so. And I think that the serration in the, the, in the street wall is, is unusual and will probably remain, even, even as lots change uses. So I think that the idea that the building is an object and looked at in a more modern, three dimensional way is an appropriate place to start. And I think that drives a lot of the decisions about their resistance to other comments that made at the last hearing about differentiating the base, differentiating the mansard. And I, and I, I would congratulate them for hanging tough. And it sounds like we're heading in the direction of an approval, which I think is, it should be something that we all listen to and, and think about when new buildings come before us, that doing a, doing a contemporary building can work very successfully in a, in a unique historic setting. I think here, what this building does for me is it really kind of speaks in the language of side wall to townhouse, which is what is immediately adjacent to it on the left. That, that kind of back, you know, side wall that's treated as a back wall, but not really, you know, sometimes it has more elaboration, sometimes it has less. But it definitely has a feeling of secondary facade that relates more to the volume of the townhouse, which is revealed because it's a typical location, right? It's, it's a, it's a row building that just happened to end up on the side with a, with an exposed side. And so you really see that volumetric quality. So I think that that aspect of it works. And I think because it's immediately adjacent to a taller building, it kind of flows with the block. And so I can support this as is, and I think it's a really good project for, for us to approve because of its, controversial is too strong a word, but because of its, its, its contemporary, frank, aesthetically sophisticated statement that it will make on the block.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
So in general, I agree with my other Commissioners. I think there have been a number of improvements. I would have liked to have seen possibly some differentiation in the color at the mansard. I mean, the, the additional slope definitely helps, but I can approve this as is.
All right, okay. So I think we'll go ahead and make a motion to approve it and ask them to continue to work with the staff on the right setback of the windows.
In a matter of two, these will be two different, yeah.
All right.
That's all right. I've learned to be a good reader after 17 years. Okay. Matter of 221 Waverly Avenue in the Clinton Hill Historic District, this is an application to construct a new building on a vacant lot. I note that the, that a two-car garage was present at the lot at the time of designation, and that the garage was demolished circa 2014 to 2016 without Landmarks Preservation Commission permit. I also note that the Waverly Avenue, that Waverly Avenue was primarily developed as a service street for the mansions on Washington Avenue, featuring a, a mix of 19th century carriage houses and modest Italianate, French Second Empire and neo-Greek style townhouses. I recommend approval, noting that the demolition, demolition of the existing one-story garage building did not eliminate any significant features of the site or the historic district, that the construction of a new building will eliminate a gap in the street wall, and that the height and massing of the proposed building will be harmonious with other buildings in this very streetscape, that the plane of the front facade will align with the front facades of other buildings on this side of the street, and that the rear facade and rear extensions will not project deeper into the central green space than other buildings on this block, that the several, that several of the carriage house, carriage houses on this block are pairs of buildings with complementary or mirroring facade compositions, therefore, the mirrored alignment of masonry openings and dormers. At this building and, and the proposed adjacent building at 223 Waverly Avenue will maintain the rhythm of buildings in the streetscape, that the taut envelope of the massing with modern materials and design details featuring lapped terracotta tile plating and extrude, and extruded metal window surrounds will recall in a contemporary and simplified manner the decorative masonry detailing and articulation found in other historic masonry buildings on this block and elsewhere in the historic district, that the proposed recessed at-grade entrance at the base will be in keeping with the variety of first-floor treatments found at buildings in this streetscape, that the rear and side facades will feature typical solid-to-void ratios and finistration patterns, and will harmonize with the second, secondary facades and neighboring buildings, that the railings at the front of the roof will be only minimally visible from directly across the street, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the streetscape or the Clinton Hill Historic District. architectural and historic character of the streetscape or the Clinton Hill Historic District. You have one vote or two votes?
We're gonna have one, two votes, but, sorry, did you say that they work with the staff?
And work, thank you, my own idea. And furthermore, that the, uh, the applicant will work with the staff to perhaps, uh, look at the recessed windows, perhaps increasing them a bit.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Luthy.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's, that one's approved and we'll move to the next motion.
Uh, this is in, um, regard to two twenty-three Waverly Avenue in the Clinton Hill Historic District. This is another vacant lot, application is to construct a new building. Do I need to read this all again? I guess so.
I think you can skip that.
Skip the comments. And go right to the, uh, recommendation, uh, that, um, so I recommend approval noting that the demolition of the existing one-story garage building did not eliminate any significant features, uh, of the site or the historic district, that the construction of a new building will eliminate a gap in the street wall, and the height and massing of the proposed building will be harmonious with other buildings in this varied streetscape, that the plane of the front facade will align with the front facades of other buildings on this side, uh, of the street, and that the rear facade and rear extensions will not project deeper into the central green space, uh, than other buildings on this block, that several of the carriage houses on this block are pairs of buildings with, uh, complementary or mirroring facade compositions, therefore, the mirrored alignment of masonry openings and dormers at this building and the proposed adjacent building at two twenty-one Waverly will maintain the rhythm of buildings in the streetscape. Sounding familiar, isn't it? And that the taut, uh, envelope of the massing with modern materials and design details featuring lapped terracotta tile cladding and extent, and extruded metal, uh, window surrounds will recall in a contemporary and simplified manner the decorative masonry detailing and articulation found at other, um, historic masonry buildings on this block and elsewhere in the historic district, that the proposed recessed at-grade entrance at the base will be in keeping with the variety of first-floor treatments found at buildings, uh, in the streetscape, that the rear and side facades will feature typi- typical solid, the void ratios and finestration patterns, and will harmonize with the secondary facades of neighboring buildings, that the railings at the front, uh, of the roof will be only minimally visible from directly across the street, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the streetscape or the Clinton Hill Historic District.
And Commissioner Luthy, would you second that motion? All right, John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
I, I guess I should have said on the same issue with the windows.
Recession with the staff. Okay, sorry.
Vice Chair Bland.
Uh, aye.
Uh, Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Commissioner Luthy.
Aye.
Uh, six in favor and opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. Thank you. And we'll move to the next public meeting item.
Next item is public meeting item number three, LPC twenty-five dash zero four three nine one. Application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block five twenty-six, slot forty-four, seventy-four McDougal Street and the McDougal Sullivan Gardens Historic District. This is a Greek Revival style house built in eighteen forty-four and later altered with Neo-Federal style elements in nineteen twenty by Francis Y. Goannis and Maxwell High. The application is constructed rooftop addition and modify openings at the rear facade. This was last presented at the public hearing of February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. No action was taken at that time. Uh, the staff will do a brief recap of the discussion and the applicants are also here to present revisions to the proposal after we open the proceedings.
Okay, and we'll do that right now. Commissioner, uh, Luthy, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll begin, and if the applicants want to speak, they can do so right after.
Good morning, Commissioners, Anu Kandl Preservation Staff. The subject property is located on the northeast corner of McDougal Street and West Houston Street in the McDougal Sullivan Gardens Historic District. This item was initially presented at the February twenty-fifth public hearing. Um, the proposed work included constructing a rooftop addition and creating a modified opening at the second floor at the rear facade. No action was taken at that time. The commissioners did not object, sorry. Uh, the commissioners did not object to the rear facade work or to the construction of a rooftop addition. While some commissioners did not object to the addition as presented, other commissioners did express concerns regarding the massing and visibility of the addition. In response to those commissioners' comments, the applicants have revised the addition to address visibility, specifically sloping the roof away from the party wall as shown in this before and after elevation. The applicants have revised the mock-up to document the visibility changes, and I will briefly walk you through the previous and new visibility studies. Uh, across the street from seventy-four McDougal Street, looking east towards the house, the previous is on the left and the revised is on the right. Uh, moving alt-south along McDougal Street towards West Houston Street, looking northeast towards the house, the previous is on the left and the revised mock-up is on the right. Um, moving further south along McDougal Street towards West Houston Street, the previous is on the top left and bottom left, and the revised is on the top right and bottom right. And then moving further along McDougal Street to West Houston Street, looking northeast, uh, the previous is on the top left and bottom left, and the revised is on the top right and bottom right. And then, um, moving north, uh, along, sorry, continuing on West Houston Street, um, you have the previous on the top left and bottom left, and then, um, the revised on the top right and bottom right. And then moving north along Sixth Avenue, looking east towards McDougal Street, the previous is on the top left and bottom left, and revised on the top right and bottom right. The applicants are here to present the changes and answer any questions.
Uh, thank you very much. That was a really good introduction. My name is Mark Barak. I'm a principal at DTLS Architecture. I'm here with the project manager, Alicia Duquette-French, and owner, Brian Sisney. Thank you guys for letting us present. For those of you who weren't here, a little bit of context. The house is in the McDougal Sullivan Gardens Historic District. What makes it unique is it's in the southwest corner. So the key point is, when you're standing in the district, you don't see the bulkhead addition. It's only once you travel south or to the west that it becomes visible. When we were presenting two weeks ago, we had a lot of good feedback from the commissioners and we spent some time revising the design while trying to address all of your concerns. But the most important thing was to make something that would work functionally and also make it a design that could stand on its own merits. So I want to briefly go over that with you. As Anu was saying, when you're north on McDougal Street, there's no visibility to the roof. It's only once you travel south towards Houston that you can start to see any sort of proposal on the roof. The existing front facade is taller towards McDougal Street. It slopes towards the rear common yard. That's really evident in the southern elevation, where you can see the slope of the roof and a step parapet along the south facade. The proposal is a rooftop addition, and we've been working with our landmarks rep to revise the fire department path to move it to the north so that any potential handrail would be concealed. But we've also taken the further comments we received two weeks ago to make some updates, which I'll be describing now. The most important variations that we made is that we were able to lower the overall height of the bulkhead by a foot. And we also worked with our client based on his unique height to find a way to create this artist loft dormer-style window on the south facade, which is on top of the stairs. And as you'll see when we get into the architectural drawings, we reverse engineered the minimum requirements for head clearance to make it as minimal as possible. That's also evident when you're looking at the facade from the rear yard, where the chamfer or the, um, artist window is visible. But it's most obvious when you're looking at the south facade, where previous proposal was an extension of the parapet. Our new proposal is actually going to recess behind the parapet, where we'll have a gutter and then sloped skylight. Looking at some side-by-side comparisons, the new massing is more modest and less visible from the street. That's even more obvious when you get closer to it and it becomes more minimized. Digging into the architectural set, we had some existing programmatic constraints that we were dealing with, specifically the fact that the stair is on the south side of the building. That was an organic place to have the stairs since the entry to the building is on the south side. So we looked at the building in section and we reverse engineered what the minimum height clearances would be for the staircase, which is going into the axis. And as you can see, my client is fairly tall. So we wanted to make sure that he was going to be comfortable going up and down the stairs and also making our minimum DOB requirements for head height. And so we use that to not only design the angle of this, um, studio window, but we also wanted to find a way to conceal any gutters for the rainwater that was coming off. The other, um, modification that we made was that originally we had a more substantial parapet for the proposed addition. We were able to reduce that just to stone coping. And one of the comments that we received two weeks ago was the idea of adding some different materials. So when we go into the final bulkhead elevations, you'll see that we use this as an opportunity to pick up on some other languages from the village. Now, the idea of adding this studio window is something that is derived from the village itself. We spent a lot of time looking at different projects in the village and found that this is a language that's not only evident in the past, but it's also been approved recently through landmarks. And we realized that since our project is not just a border of a historic district, it's also a vista for people looking into the village. We wanted to make sure that the language we were using was reiterating some of the existing languages that are already in the area. Just for clerical work, the, um, addition is not visible when you're standing in the historic district on McDougal. It's only once you go three hundred feet to the west on Sixth Avenue that the bulkhead does become visible. But I'd also like to point out that based on our reductions, the visibility has been reduced. The mock-up, um, has been rebuilt as one-to-one scale. And you can see with side-by-side comparisons that the massing has been reduced as well as the overall height. Now you're looking a little bit to the south and you can see how that artist dormer window has a direct effect on the south facade. Now we can do some side-by-side comparisons from the street. Here you're standing within the historic district. The previous design wasn't visible and the updated design is not visible. Once you start traveling to the southern border of the historic district, the, um, previous design was slightly visible, whereas the new design is more concealed. And then getting closer to Houston, the overall impact of the addition has been minimized based on these modifications. As you walk further away from the historic district, traveling towards Houston, you can see how we've made a difference in the overall size of the massing. The proposed massing is on the right, the previous is in the middle. And then standing across Houston, you can see how minimal the, uh, proposal is. Now it's once you move to the west and you get closer to Sixth Avenue that you can, um, really start to see the modifications that we've made. If you look in the upper right-hand corner, we've managed to reduce the visibility of the proposed design. But nothing is more evident than when you're standing on Sixth Avenue across from the playground, where you can see a direct comparison of how these changes have reduced the overall size. When we go into some detail, one of the things that we really wanted to do was create a design that would have village merit and also be more indigenous to the area. We realized that regardless of what design we put on top of this building, it was always going to be visible, and we wanted to stay true to our concept of making it look like it was derived from the language of the neighborhood. So we looked at what other artists' windows have used in the past, and we found a patinaed copper. And it, we were going to use a standing seam joint. And this was going to be used not only on the horizontal portion of the roof, but also on the slope portion, so that it would create a seamless mass while also allowing us to reduce the height. Now, there's a few other contextual images that we've included at the end of the presentation, but this wraps up the new proposal. And we wanted to say thank you for letting us present again so quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have some questions. Commissioner Ginsburg.
So, from my notes from last time, there were three things we suggested, and you've done two of them and not the third. So you sloped the roof and you lowered the height, both positive. But we had asked that the material of the addition be differentiated from the facade, and in the front and back, I understand what you did on the side, but in the front and back, it looks like you haven't changed it from the brick of the same color as the building below.
Yes, that was a conscious decision. We went through numerous iterations of what other options we could look at, and we realized that we wanted this to still look like it was an extension of the building below. And we felt that leaving the northwest and east facades as brick would help us keep the character of the neighborhood in the building. And that by introducing a new material for the roof and the slope facade, that was starting to, um, thread the needle of accomplishing both of the objectives.
Thank you.
Other questions? Any other questions? Right, so I think we can move to our discussion and I'll note for the record that we did receive a letter from Vis- Village Preservation, which was shared in advance. I think, uh, supporting the reduction in visibility, but still expressing concerns with height and the design. So, um, we'll begin our discussion now. This, um, thank you, as you stated, there were, we asked, I think, the last time we saw this, I should say that I think everybody, uh, present at the time thought that a visible addition could be okay, that this was going to be visible no matter what and should be designed. Uh, but that, I think, most of the comments were that it was just a little bit bigger and taller and more visible than we typically approve. And we asked them to reduce the visibility and, uh, think about the treatment. And so, um, they've presented the revised proposal today and we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
Okay. My comments are going to continue with my questions. Uh, I think the, in general, I think this is approvable. Uh, the slope over the stair and the metal and the, uh, artist skylight are all really good and the lowered height is good. I don't think the front and rear facades should look like the floors below. And either you could go to the copper you're using in other places, potentially stucco. There are a number of things, and I think this can be worked with, with staff, uh, to resolve this. And besides that, I think it's appropriate. Curious what my other commissioners feel.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Chen, I'm not sure if you were here long enough. I don't know if you want to wait till here some of the others. Okay, Vice Chair Bland, I think you were fairly supportive last time.
I was very supportive, and I'm sorry, uh, in a way that it's, uh, regressed. Uh, I like the anomaly of, of that errant window, uh, visible, highly visible as it was. But there's no denying that you've worked hard and quickly, uh, to respond to the majority of comments. Mine was in the minority. And I think you've done an excellent job. And, uh, I do support the idea that this, this addition on this kind of classically beautiful house at the end of the row can have a, an addition on the top, which, which is of the same material, in other words, of the brick. So I support the brick, and therefore I guess I support everything about the proposal, even though I missed the last proposal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, I, uh, I think that, uh, in, in general, it's, it's done a very good job in reducing the size and it's great. I do think that, in general, we, um, we do ask applicants to use a different material and finish from the existing building just to give a sense that this is not a penthouse or a fourth-floor addition that's, you know, part of the original building in some sense. So, you know, we, we try to make it look like other rooftop creations. It's, it's a pretty design, it looks nice. But, uh, you know, we're generally trying to make this look more like rooftop furniture than like a, you know, an addition, you know, uh, as, as at a penthouse. So, you know, I-
So maybe explore a material with the staff.
I'd add at this point, see what the other commissioners think on this issue.
Commissioner Luthy.
I also want to, uh, commend the applicant for coming back so quickly and doing their best to, uh, make most of the changes that we asked for. and doing their best to make most of the changes that we asked for. I appreciate the sloping of the roof and the lowering of the height and the railing setback and the change in color. And also on the south side, the change in the windows, so they don't, doesn't look like it's part of the building. I just want to make a, this, this is not part of the original building. It just isn't. And it's in a historic district. We don't, you know, we don't allow people to put additions on buildings and have them, you know, with the goal of making them seem like they're part of the building. So I think the comments that have been made in that regard, I'm so sorry, Brad, but I think the comments that have been made in that regard are, you know, make sense in terms of, you know, what we, of how we normally treat these kinds of projects. So, and I do agree that the applicant should work with staff on the material and the finish of the rooftop addition and study it in a way so that it, to the best of its ability, it can recede. And we just saw a very nice example of that, you know, in Clinton Hill.
All right, that's it. Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks. I didn't see it last time, but I think it's appropriate. I think that the one question I had, which wasn't answered by this brief presentation, which might have been answered by the original one, was that there does seem to be a precedent for rooftop additions in this district. There are a couple of buildings that have it. So I think that's, that was for me the threshold question. I think that the, the visibility is unusual because of the park across the street and because its location is, you know, you can get pretty far away from it. So I think the visibility issue is okay. I think that the materiality issue for me, I'm not deeply opposed to the brick. I think that it reads as a rooftop addition or at the very least a bulkhead anyway, because of its shape and its position. And those were often made out of brick. So I think that it's okay in the brick. However, it seems that the, the general tenor of the conversation is leaning in the other direction. So what I would say is that if they're going to do a different material, then one of the key things that they're doing here is to raise the parapet up at the low wall beneath the angled roof. Internet finally helped me out there. Let's see, it's still loading. So if you can go to the side view, I think the key thing here is if you're going to do that, exactly that, raise the parapet up. I'm not sure that that would work so well with the change in material, right? So either you'd have to kind of raise the parapet up, return the brick for parapet's depth, and then switch, you know, maybe with a change in plane or something, or continue the line of the parapet, bring the material around and have the differentiation to, to be visible from the side of side. I also noticed, forgive me because I wasn't here last time, side of the building is now partially parched. Is the, if the proposal-
There are, there is a proposal to paint, an already painted facade to be painted and that is eligible for staff level.
So I think that that's an interesting question. I mean, this, this district is kind of characterized by its paintedness. And the fact that, you know, here again, we have a townhouse that is a facade that is now going to become a three-dimensional object if you paint to match the facade, that's an interesting question. I, I think that, that's, that's probably done a lot. I think we've seen, you know, you see that, you know, where this does happen, that people return the paint. But, so I guess, it looked to me like it was parched and not painted, but I'm not, I can't tell from pictures. But I, I would go either way, but I think that if, if, if working this through with staff, the decision is to change the material, that they consider carefully how to deal with that little bit of parapet.
Yeah. It's a good point. Thank you for catching that. Okay, so I think that is the, the, most commissioners did want to see a change. Do you, do you want to add anything? Sorry, Commissioner Chen.
Not to complicate the matter, I do agree that with Vice Chair Bland, I think in this case, like Michael, I think being the building is so classical. And the applicant has seemed to have modified. I think the word on the side panel, I think, is a little bit regressed. I think the original might have been better. But I, I do think that, to me, at least personally, I think the brick, to me, is acceptable here, given the high visibility. And then so, I do not know what that does for your decision-making.
Okay, all right. So I think we're-
Yes, just something to differentiate it and, you know, leave open the material issue. This could be color or some more size of brick.
We are at a point where we're sort of 50/50. So I, I think, Commissioner Ginsburg, if you're comfortable with this, could we do a motion that they study and explore the transition of material from side to front?
Yeah.
Great.
With regards to LPC 25-04391, 74 McDougal Street, McDougal Sullivan Gardens Historic District. A Greek Revival style house built in 1844 and later altered with Neo-Federal style elements in the 1920s by Francis Y. Jones and Maxwell Hyde. Application is to construct rooftop addition and modify openings at the rear facade. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the McDougal Sullivan Garden Historic District. I further note that the designation report describes the use of the open area in the interior of the block as an important feature of the plan and that each house had a small private garden, but the large central areas for common use. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the rooftop addition will be setback from the front and rear facades, thereby maintaining a sense of the building's original massing, that the massing of the rooftop addition will be sloped away from the south sidewall, thereby reducing its visibility over a one-story building from the southwest on McDougal Street, and that the raised parapet will partially obscure the addition from this view and will be constructed in a brick and cap with coping stone to match the material of the historic parapet. That the rooftop addition and railing as viewed over the rear facade from within the private central garden will be seen in the context of other rooftop, bulkheads, railings and flues seen within the block. That the railing will be setback from the rear facade and the simple design and black painted finish will allow for a high degree of transparency and help it remain a discreet presence. That the patinaed copper roof is in keeping with the treatment of rooftop additions and other accretions found throughout the district. And that the installation of the proposed modified door opening in the rear facade visible from within the private central garden will not result in damage to or loss of any significant historic fabric and will not substantially alter the solid-to-void ratio of this portion of the facade. However, I find that the proposed rooftop addition featuring multi-light door assembly and brick painted to match the McDougal Street facade of the building over which it will be visible from select advantage points will not sufficiently differentiate from the historic front facade. Therefore, I recommend that the material and finish of the rooftop addition be restudied to differentiate and disassociate it from the primary facade of the building and help it to recede in view, along with the details with the extended parapet in consultation with staff.
And Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Lutfi? Seven in favor and nine opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Just continue to work with the staff to explore that material and how it relates to the facade and the sidewall. All right. That's great. Thank you, thank you. All right, we'll move to the next public meeting item.
Next item is public meeting item number four, LPC 25-05231, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in Manhattan, Block 543, Lot 15, 122 to 128 West Third Street in the South Village Historic District. This is an American round arch style stable building designed by Benjamin E. Lowe and built in 1889 with a 1900 extension on Mineta Lane, designed by William Ben Dorn. The application is to construct rooftop additions, demolish the rear of the building and create a courtyard with new rear facade and connector. Reconstruct lotline walls and floor slabs, alter the ground floors and install new infill and enlarge existing windows and create new window openings. This was last presented at the public hearing of January 28th, 2025. No action was taken at that time. The applicants will present revisions to the proposal in response to your comments after we open the proceedings.
All right, thank you. And Vice Chair Bland, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the applicants may begin.
Good morning, Commissioners Castack, Burke, Higgins, Quays, Barton Partners. I'm here with our project team, Nat Oppenheimer from Silman, Christopher Courtney from Morris Ajmi, Morris Ajmi, our client, Patrick Milner and my colleague Jesse Kling. I, I along with Christopher and Nat will take you through the, through the presentation and obviously we're all available for, for any questions. As, as was just discussed, we brought this project before you back in January for the adaptive reuse of a garage structure in the South Village Historic District. At that time, there was support for the project, but there were three primary items that the commissioners wanted us to take a look at. One was the visibility of rooftop addition, particularly on the West Third Street side of the project, but also the detailing of the addition and how those two things related to one another. There was an interest in looking at the ground floor on Third Street and maintaining the solidity and irregularity of that side of the building. And also discussion sort of along those lines is to look at one of the entries that was proposed on, on the Mineta Lane side. So we've looked at that. There were also two other questions that came up in the discussion. They were sort of more of a technical nature. One had to do with the coatings on the Mineta Street side and the other had to do with the lotline walls. And so we're, we have design responses to those first three issues. We've reduced the height of the addition considerably less visible. The base of the building has been redesigned to sort of recall the sort of ad hoc nature of the building at the ground floor and also modifications on Mineta. And we're going to sort of talk through our responses to the questions regarding the lotline walls and the coatings. Let me go ahead and continue into the presentation. We summarize these points here on this slide. I'm not going to read through this, but you can refer back to this if you have this digitally. But I think we'll, we'll jump right in and, and share both existing condition images. I think Commissioner Bland wasn't here, maybe Commissioner Chen was also not here. So this is a through-block site that runs from West Third to Mineta. The West Third Street portion of the building was constructed as a stable in 1889. And then it was extended to Mineta Lane in 1900. Building started as a stable and then was converted to a garage in the first quarter of the 20th century. It's located in the South Village Historic District, which is this interesting mixed-use district that has tenements and row houses as well as these industrial buildings, many of which have been transformed and converted. And this project envisions the adaptive reuse of this garage to, to new residential use. I'll also just mention a few things. There's an extensive scope of restoration work across both facades. And there's an open application right now on the Mineta Lane side for extensive repair work, which includes a fair amount of replacement of face brick and that's already been approved by the staff. And this, this is sort of relevant in the discussion about the coatings, because I think there was a question about the idea of maintaining the weathered look. But one of the challenges with that is that there's actually quite a bit of replacement of face brick. So to leave it, which is an appealing idea to us, to leave the, the building as it is, you'd end up with this kind of patchwork of coated masonry where it's parched and new brick and infilled repair brick. So I think the aesthetic is appealing, but I think the result probably wouldn't be. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. And this is our updated proposal. So on the, on the left is a redesigned ground floor, which maintains the two historic openings at the center of the, of the facade and the doorway on the far right, which is the, the west side of the facade, that's actually a restoration back to a historic opening that was there, reducing the size of one of the existing garage openings. And then restoration across the upper floors, new light, multi-light windows. And I think significantly at the top, you're, you're barely seeing the addition. We've, we've looked at this, we've rebuilt the mockup. There are photographs in the appendix of the mockup. There is about a few inches of visibility when you're literally pressed up against the building line directly across the street. But as you're, as a passerby walking down the street on this eight, 10-foot-wide sidewalk, you, you will not see it. So there's been a significant reduction and Christopher will take you through sort of how we achieve that. So that's on the Third Street side and on the right, the Mineta side, you don't see the addition from this view, but we've reduced the height and detailing as well, simplified the detailing at the main entry at the center, which I think again goes to that comment about looking, from the commissioners, looking to maintain the solidity of, of the base of these buildings. So those are the major, the major changes that we've made. This is the streetscape elevation from, from the previous version. The district ends at this line here. Everything to the east of that is within the district. And then to the far side of the, the slide is Sixth Avenue and that's sort of a regular edge along Sixth Avenue where the subway was cut through. And then the revision, which brings down the height of the addition, three and a half feet and the resulting reduction in visibility from, from the surrounding streets. And then side-by-side elevations where you see the reduction in the height at the top, but you also see the changes at the base of the building, where the comments from the commissioners were largely about the sort of, sort of regular nature of what was proposed. And so we've, we've gone back to look at the historic and existing openings and, and maintain, maintain those. So just to walk around the building, on the left is our rendering from the previous proposal. On the right is the update. So this is the image you just saw. You can see the addition was visible over the parapet at this point on the right. A few inches of it is, are visible, but I think it, it really is imperceptible. And as I said, if you're standing at the curb across the street, you don't see it. As you move around the building, we've, we've added a red circle around the area where the visibility or where the, where the addition is visible. Again, this is this sort of moment on the, on the east, east side of Sixth Avenue between sideline, side lotline walls where you're seeing just a small piece of the addition up here. The, the, the brick and, and standing seam metal of the addition sort of blend with the immediate surroundings. And we've also changed the articulation and detailing of the sidewalls on this side. This was a comment from the commissioners. That's, that's now going to be brick, so it sort of blends with the surroundings in a, in a, in a way that I think is, is more effective. Across the street from Sixth Avenue, comparative views now looking, looking east from Sixth Avenue into that sort of open side between the two parts of the, of the block. These views, you know, in a month will be completely obscured, but they are, they are visible through the winter, through these trees. And so you see the addition sort of in the context of other rooftop features on these side elevations as you look through the sort of mid-block site between Third and Mineta. This is a view mostly looking toward, toward the addition and seeing the bridge that connects the two halves of, of the property. And then getting a little bit further south, and again, you're seeing the back of, of the addition on the Third Street side. And again, you begin to pick up the brick here, part of the side to, to create a little bit more distinction between the volume on the roof. And then as you move south, this is that long view looking up Carmine Street. It's now nearly lost in the, in the thicket of trees and you can see the two, two comparative views. Coming around, now we're on Mineta, Mineta Lane, the intersection of Mineta Lane and then Mineta Street, close in. So again, you don't see the, the, the addition from this view, but you'll also see that the, the overall height of that central entry now has been reduced. These two flanking entries for the commissioners, these are restored entries with distorted metals. These have been inbuilt with brick. Those are going to be reopened as part of the new use. And there's a, basically an egress door set in between those two. Those two provide entrance to separate apartments. The, the door at the center is a central entry for an egress for, for the overall complex. And then as you move down Mineta Street, before that, that bend, there is visibility of the addition. This too has been reduced nearly a foot on, on the Mineta Street, Mineta Lane side of, of the project. And then as we come along around, so now we're on McDougal and Mineta Lane, again, you can see the reduction in height. This is less apparent, but the side elevation here will be brick. It will be painted similar to the, to the front elevation, but it now is in brick and not standing seam. And then as we come around onto the corner of Third, Third and McDougal- onto the corner of Third, Third and McDougall, you can see the change again, I think significant going from the side elevation with standing seam to brick. It all sort of blends with, with the roof, roofscape features that one sees around the district. And then the last view here, looking, looking sort of east from, sorry, looking west from McDougall Street. The addition is almost now completely eliminated from visibility, just a very, a very small amount of that. So significant changes in, in the visibility, but also the detailing of, of the side elevations. And I'll have Christopher take you through this and explain how that was achieved.
Good morning. Christopher Courtney with Morris Ajmi Architects. So, so exactly, I'll just run through on the architectural details and the, the changes, starting with the top of the building here. On the bottom is the revised, the top is the previous, the red dimensions on the bottom are those that have been revised. So in this elevation, there's a little bit of reduction in a lot of different places to kind of work with the balances of what we've reduced. The main things to point out here are again, the, the, the overall height dimension of the addition itself is three foot six in, in reduction. On the bottom drawing on the right side, you can see the brick extends now up to the top of the addition. So the lot line wall is rendered in brick. That helps to give that, that sort of essence of rooftop accretion seen within the district. And then small change, but the, the, the doors on the first floor of the addition had a transom above that's now been reduced as part of the, the overall reduction. In this section, we can see the overall changes between the, the previous above and the revised below. The red dimension on the bottom right, you can see the, the, the overall addition itself was reduced from twenty-five eight to twenty-two two. So that's, that's the three foot six dimension. The limiting factor between the floor height changes themselves was the fourth floor, the relationship of the sill to the floor and basically maintaining an ADA height operable handle for that. So we left that alone and you can see the three dimensions on, on the top three floors. Those are what have been reduced. So each of those have been reduced just to get the equal condition to all of the floors. So with the three foot six, that's a one foot two reduction per each of those three floors at the top. On the Minetta Street side, the, the, the one-story addition, we kept the height of the, the floor itself, but the overall massing obviously moves down to make that connection with the bridge to the front of the building or the West Third Street side of the building. So that overall height does change by one foot, two inches. Here, here we're mostly looking at the, the dimensions in red are those that have changed. So all of those basically come back to the same thing of the three foot six dimension reduction of, of the addition. Also, also on the, on the right side here, we can see the, the lot line has been, the, the brick on the lot line has been extended all the way up to the top of the addition. So, so there's no standing seam at the lot line. And, and that, that happens on both sets of buildings. The other thing that just to point out in terms of the visibility as well is that dark black, black dash line. Those are the buildings next door. So in terms of what's actually visible on the side and the lot lines, it's just that little sliver, at least for West Third. There's a little bit more visibility, obviously on Minetta, on, on, on both sides of that. And then as we flip to the Minetta side, you can again see those dash lines. So, so here obviously there's a lot more visibility on the Minetta east side of the facade. Again, with, with raising up the brick to the top of the addition, we've also taken the opportunity to extend the finish on the east side of the Minetta facade all the way back to, to, to fill in that whole plane. Whereas previously we're sort of doing some cementitious and some exposed red brick, but it, it just becomes more obvious to do the, the entire surface as the same treatment in that case. And so then moving down to the ground floor, this is the, the same historic photos we looked at previously. And so we're just kind of recalling the, the ad hoc nature of the ground floor. The mix of doors of different sizes and windows of different qualities. Also that juxtaposed with the, the regularity of the windows above. One thing to point out as well, Cass has already described that we've recreated the, the central windows. The, the opening all the way to the east side is currently non-existent because it, it's, it's part of the same opening as the, as the space next door. But that had a, an arched opening with a, a roll lock on top. So we've recreated that as well. Here you can see on the image on the right, it's very faint, but there, there is the extent condition of the roll lock brick. So that exists today still and we are, we are making use of those. And then here it's just highlighted so that we can kind of see that very clearly. So here we've created a, a new rendering just to give a sense of the, the streetscape experience. Starting in the middle, obviously you can see the, those windows that, that have been created. The roll lock brick is still existent on above and we've kept the width of the windows, which, which matches those of the windows above. And we have lowered the height of this a little bit just because it is still a retail space inside. So we want to get as much natural light into that space as possible. And so it's just been a balance of the interior and exterior condition in terms of the sill height for that. Moving to the right, the storefront opening, we've updated the height of the bulkhead as well as adding a little bit more profile and detail to the, to the overall storefront articulation in general. And then here you can see a little bit of the, the, the intent for the louver, which we'll see in detail moving forward. But the intent is, is that's actually a custom louver that's in front of the mechanical louver. So it's a little thicker in detail. It's got a little more substantialness to it. It is still metal and it's painted, but, but, but we feel that that fit, that, that fits nicely as a, as a masking to the, the more thinner mechanical louver that sits behind it. Moving to the left, the, the residential entry has the canopy. We did reduce the depth of that and the height and then adjusted the profile basically to, there was a profile on top and bottom. So we lightened it up by taking the profile off of the bottom and did a little adjustment at the top. And then on the left side, we can see the garage door. We've added some panels to that to give a little bit more variation and more regularity in, in general. And so here we can see nicely a, a, a side by side comparison, so to speak, of all of those conditions. So starting from the left, the garage door with the, with the recess panels added. The, the central windows being reinstated. And then you can see the relationship of the egress door all the way on the right side of the facade, which also pulls in that roll lock to match the, the, the arched condition of the windows at the center of the facade. Quick side by sides of the garage door, previous and proposed. And the same thing with the egress door, previous and proposed. Also the egress door is now in a typical aluminum storefront door, just instead of glass, it's an inset metal panel. These are previous details that we looked at last time. And then these are the revised. A lot of red dimensions here showing just some minor changes overall. One thing to point out is on the top right, Diane, actually, there was a question last time just about the recess and how far the, the facades were recessed. So we are extending, we are allowing the doors in an open position to extend the maximum by code of one foot six. And so that means they sit back about one foot three to the molyen. There's a frame around that in addition that we'll look at in detail, but that just gives a sense of how back they are, how far back they are recessed. The bottom left drawing just gives the one foot six increase, the one foot six height of the bulkhead that's been increased. And then section C in the middle shows the four foot deep canopy, which is reduced back from six feet deep. And then the section D is a blow up of the canopy itself. So you can see the, the, the overall height has been reduced by about four inches. The profile has been adjusted a little bit at the top and the profile will be replaced. These are enlarged details showing the storefront. So on the left side, a vertical section cutting through. Mainly here you can see the, the molyen caps that have been added for a bit of profile. The recessed base at the, at the bulkhead. Here you can also see the louvers on the top. So you see sort of two sets of louvers, the mechanical louvers on the left and then the custom metal louver that sits in front of it is on the right. It's got a little more thickness than the typical thin mechanical louver. And then obviously the enlarged view on the right, you can get a sense of the, the relationship of the, the storefront to the, the face of the brick. You can also see that the brick itself, the, the brick wall existing is about sixteen inches. So that's shown in scale and just the relationship of the, the trim around that at the storefront. Similar idea here, just with the updates, some additions of details at the, at the garage. The main thing maybe to point out is just the, 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 the detail of the garage door itself and the, the section on the bottom left. So flipping around to Minetta, to Minetta Lane, this was the, the, the previous street elevation that we looked at. Moving forward, you can see that the addition did move down the fourteen inches here. And then you can also see the change at the center opening at the ground floor. Here's a side by side, you can see a little bit better, the, the, the ground floor condition. There's a little bit more density that's been brought back to the facade to, to retain a little bit of density and solidity. The canopy has been moved down as well and the transom removed just to sort of align with that existing datum line that we'd, we'd created. We feel that the canopy has a little bit more of a nice balance anyway with the lintels that are there on either side. Sorry, I'll also point out on that previous slide, we did indicate the, the coursing of the brick or clarify the coursing of the brick openings to fall on true coursings of bricks. This is a previous slide that we looked at pre, the last presentation. And here you can just see the changes. All the dimensions in red are those that have been revised. I think it's a good place to transition.
So just continuing on, on the technical discussion about Minetta, so some detailed photographs of the facade, this is the Minetta Lane facade. Just to illustrate the conditions in the appendix are, are pages from the approved scope of work that that the staff has reviewed, which calls for particularly the photo on the lower left where there's been a deterioration of the brick, there will be replacement of face brick. So we illustrate, we include this photograph, this series of photographs, sorry. And this image too, just to indicate sort of what the conditions are and highlight the fact that there will actually be quite a bit of new brick integrated into this facade. So that's why we think maintaining the sort of coated finish, we're envisioning like a chime mineral based coating on the facade isn't appropriate. Use in this instance, instead of being able to maintain that weathered appearance, just because of the degree of change that's going to be required to repair and restore, restore this facade. And then this just illustrates the sort of red tones, illustrates the areas that, that are approved for replacement. And then of course, just the overall scope of removals as part of, part of this scope. So that, that addresses sort of why we, why we do think that maintaining the coating as a part of the proposal is, is a necessary aspect of, of the scope of work. Net?
Thank you. Nat Oppenheimer with TY Lynn, formerly Silman. Always Silman in my heart. So this, this elevation, what you've seen shows the remaining lot line walls. And what I'm here to speak about only a couple of slides is why this, we believe this to be a unique condition. We've, as you know, our office has been involved in numerous projects like this where we've retained the lot line walls. We believe strongly in that. We think there's some unique conditions on this project that we're putting forward, the idea of removing a lot of line walls in this case only. And this shows the lot line walls that would remain essentially. We're already cutting fifteen feet off the rear of the Third Street building for light and air and so on. So this shows it in plan. And so you see the four basic or eight lot line walls on the Third Street side and the Minetta side. So what we're wrestling with on this particular project, we know we've done probes. We know all four independent walls. In all cases, they're very much separate from the building next door, which is a fairly unique condition of itself. They're not built in, they're not party walls. We are working quite a bit with Department of Buildings and you know, there's a couple of matters in front of you where we're retaining these walls for important reasons. In this case, what we're concerned about is that what will be left with is eight remnant unreinforced masonry walls, basically floating between two side, two buildings, one seismic, one not. And that the detailing in this case, in order to provide slots and movement and so on to not impose force in the unreinforced masonry in two directions can get into very complicated detailing, detailing that the city is now becoming more and more rigorous with. So we find ourselves in this tension between retaining the historic fabric, which we appreciate and often have in the past and adhering to what DOB is now requiring in terms of sliding connections and so on in two directions. And so we want to be rigorous about this and we feel that because the wall is totally in all eight faces are totally independent from the neighbors. This particular unique situation where again, we're removing all the floors for other reasons and so on pushes forward this idea that this probably is the right project to actually consider removing these walls. And that's why we put this forward to the commission. We also have, I'm sorry, one last thing. We've spoken already with a showing embracing engineer to ensure that the front facades retain all of their integrity during this operation. Thank you.
So just finally, just returning back to, to the, the updated renderings for the two sides of the building. The West Third Street side of Minetta, I think, thinking about the context of the South Village Historic District, it's really fascinating, relatively small district. A mixed-use district with a variety of building types and styles and ages. This project envisions the adaptive reuse of the, of this garage structure for new residential use. And I think balances the, the importance of the repair and restoration scopes with the additions that are required to, and modifications that are required to bring light and air to the building, along with the, the additions and the revisions that I think we're presenting with you today. Hopefully you agree are, are responsive. As are the responses to the questions regarding coatings and, and the, and the structural issues that, that Nat's just spoken about. So with, with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. All right. Do we have questions? Yes, Vice Chair Bland.
I missed, as you pointed out, the earlier presentation. I'm still a little confused on what we're seeing there on the, on the rendering. Is this? What is happening to the brick?
So there are two, on which side?
No, the West Third.
So the brick, so there is paint at the base of, and I can run up to the existing photos to show you sort of what that looks like. There is a paint across the ground floor on Third Street. That's going to be removed and the, the brick will be restored.
This, this is an existing opening. This is an existing opening. These are inbuilt brick openings.
No, I got that, but the, the brick itself, is that it?
It will be, it will be historic brick with possibly some new brick inserted in, but there is painted brick right now.
So, so it, the whole thing will be a paint, not paint.
This, this side is parched and painted and coated.
Okay.
This, this is painted from here down. That thing will be stripped off and the brick will be exposed on that.
Yep.
Other questions? All right. So we'll, we'll move to our discussion. And again, I'll note that Village Preservation submitted a letter in response to the revised proposal, which was shared with everybody that focused, I think, on the height and cladding of the rooftop addition. And so the last time we saw this, as Cass noted, there were really three areas. And I want to start out actually by saying that there was a lot of enthusiasm here when we saw this the first time about this adaptive reuse. The number of units being created and the approach to these two different buildings facing, with two different facades. And so there were three areas that we focused on. One was the rooftop penthouse where we asked the applicants to see if they could lower it a bit and think about the materials in a way that helps it blend into the cityscape as it's, when it's viewed from distances. And then on the West Third Street facade, we asked them to think about the solid void ratio and to retain some solidity and some of the ad hoc quality of the existing condition. And they are now proposing to reopen some of the smaller openings to break up the row of storefronts they had originally proposed. And so that will be using existing openings and reopening the arched infilled openings that pre-existed. And then on the Minetta, Minetta Lane side, we did. we were supportive of the additional line of windows on the upper floors. The two large openings on the ground floor are existing openings that are being restored to their original opening size. And we asked them to look at the egress door in between to reduce the amount of glass there, and they've lowered the height of that. So I think that we did have a discussion about the side walls last time, and everybody, I think, was persuaded that in this case, the removal of those side walls would be warranted. I think we did want to just confirm that there was, you know, if there wasn't any small amount of fabric that could be retained. And so I thank you for coming back and addressing that again today. So I think we're really looking at these three areas of work where they have made some changes directly in response to our comments. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one?
Sure. I think this is a wonderful project. I liked it before. I like it better now. I think that it has a very good sense for the buildings themselves, the two back to back buildings and for the the environment in which they exist. I think that the changes to the streetscapes, the street walls at ground level on both buildings have improved its relationship with the original and kind of signal back to the streetscape that the parking garage has created. I I think that the rooftop additions have been significantly enough reduced, in my opinion, to make them recede into the background. Most of the visibility is from Sixth Avenue where 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 there's a bunch of lower buildings and park spaces along along the street front that's not original. And I think that you see it in the context of other rooftop accretions. I I could I think that I think in general that, you know, the detailing is 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 quite good. There are minor details that I think that they could look at with staff, but that that wouldn't change my views. I think the use of a metal base under the storefront is a little bit it might get beat up and and look bad quickly. I think that the the entry canopy for me feels a little bit out of left field with one molding on it and kind of like, you know, is it modern? Hot. I just felt a little bit weak to me, but none of these are substantive, significant comments. I could approve it as 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 is.
All right, Commissioner Ginsburg.
I agree with Commissioner Goldblum. This is a really good project. You've made it better, and I appreciate that you've listened to our comments and responded to them. So I can approve this. It's totally appropriate.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I wish I was here on the original hearing, but based on what I'm hearing and seeing, I agree with the rest of the commissioners. I must say that in looking at the previous submission, I personally don't have the problem with the original storefront on the West First Street side, but I think it's fine that they responded to the commissioner's comment and reduced, and I think the height reduction is nicely done.
Vice Chair Bland.
First of all, from a social point of view, it seems like it's a it's a big win replacing cars with people behind those historic walls. Good thing. And instead of coming to us as so often happens with somebody who takes two adjoining townhouses with perhaps many apartments and reduces them to one McMansion, we have the opposite. So that's all good. I didn't see it before. I think the changes that have been made seem responsive to the commissioner's comments then. And I, other than the sign, which I don't quite understand, is that, are those letters applied? Are they painted? What, what, I didn't, I should have answered that question. Maybe I have to ask.
It's historic signage, so the intent is to match what either what's there now or keep it.
Okay, therefore, all good.
Commissioner Chapin.
I'm going to focus on the changes, which I do think are have improved the project, made it approvable. It is no longer visible from the front facade, or at least very minimally. The revision to the ground floor on the West Third Street side has preserved the eclectic original fenestration and in part and brought it closer to sense of the originals, bringing that back. And the scale of the door on the Manetta Lane side has been reduced to a more typical streetscape scale, which I think was something I was thought would be helpful. So I can approve it as a resumption.
Great. Commissioner Letty.
I mean, without repeating too much, I do want to say that I think the project, I always feel like this happens with Mark's this project. We ask for changes, they come back. They've listened to us and you know, the project is just these tweaks have made the project better. I actually love the front facade of the building now. It's it's great that the height of the addition was reduced, it's barely visible, and now you're really just paying attention to what's there. And the exposed brick looks great. The the changes at the base really make this feel, even though it's there have been changes, it still feels like it's part of the neighborhood. I feel like by bringing the openings in, I've loved those two infill windows. And the fact that the sizes are you know, the heights are different and the details on the on the garage are better. And I'm happy there's a garage there. And I think the changes to Manella Lane are terrific. I like the reduction in the center door height and it changes from a visibility perspective. And I think in general, now that with all the changes that have been made, the visibility from a distance makes you just feel like, I think you had said it, that the addition is like just part of the landscape of the open city in this neighborhood.
All right, great. All right. So I think we're all in agreement. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make the motion?
Sure. Regarding one twenty-two to one twenty-eight was Third Street in the South Village Historic District, the application is to construct rooftop additions, demolish the rear of the building to create a courtyard with new rear facades and connect to reconstruct lot line wall floor slabs, alter the ground floors, install new infill, large existing windows and create new window openings. I note the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Greenwich Village or South Greenwich, South Village Historic District. South Village Historic District. That I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features that the existing garage building is utilitarian in nature. And the presence of visible rooftop structures in a modified ground floor will support the adaptive reuse of the building to residential use without compromising the architectural integrity of the historic primary facades. That this historic district contains several examples of visible multi-story rooftop additions that vary in design and scale. Therefore, the presence of a visible rooftop addition in bulkheads appropriately designed and scaled will be consistent with past commission approvals and will not overwhelm the building or the streetscape. That the proposed additions will be set back twenty feet from the front parapets of both facades in the garage building of the garage building, thereby distinguishing the massing of the addition from that of the historic building. That the materials and details of the proposed rooftop additions and bulkheads consisting of standing sin grave finished zinc cladding and red brick will be consistent with the materials typically used for rooftop accretions in this historic district. That the rooftop additions, bulkheads and mechanical equipment will be situated toward the back corners of the roof to minimize visibility when viewed from close proximity to the building. And their presence and visibility is otherwise most prominent when viewed from a distance at oblique angles. That the removal of the rear facades and portions of the building at the center of the through block lot for the creation of a new courtyard and new rear facades will be consistent with the history of changes to the to garage buildings within this historic district as they are adapted for new uses over time will support the adaptive reuse of the buildings to meet modern requirements for light and air. That the design of the proposed rear facades featuring brick piers and spandrels, setback terraces, large glazed openings, multi-light metal windows and doors will maintain the scale and character of the utilitarian building. That the proposed metal and glass connected between the two portions of the building will have an open industrial quality that evokes fire escapes and stair towers and will only be minimally visible from a public thoroughfare between buildings on Sixth Avenue in the context of several other buildings on the block. That the design, configuration and materials of the proposed ground floor infill on West Third Street, of the West Third Street facade featuring large metal framed, simple display windows and doors and dark finished panel, metal panel garage and service entrance doors will maintain the scale and openness of the original garage openings. That two, that reopening two small scale window openings at the ground floor and installing multi-pane double hung windows will recall the more varied sizes and heights of the historic ground floor openings. That the design of the new multi-light infill at the ground floor of the Manetta Lane facade will recall the scale and articulation of the stable doors. That the scale of the proposed Manetta Lane entrances in keeping with secondary nature of the facade and the character of the of the narrow street, that the materiality and presence of metal canopies over the residential entrances will be typical of these features sometimes found on utilitarian buildings and apartment buildings in this historic district. That the modifications to the window openings by lowering the sills to brick courses at West Third Street, at the West Third Street facade will have minimal impact on the proportions of the fenestration and will be consistent with the evolution of the utilitarian and functional nature of the garage buildings found in this historic district and nearby adjacent districts. That the addition of new window openings within a large field of plain brickwork at the Manetta Lane facade will relate well to the historic fenestration pattern and will maintain typical solid void ratio. That the deteriorated condition of the existing lot line walls and their partial removals required to create the new central courtyard warrants their full removal and replacement, which will be executed with new brickwork to match the existing historic condition where visible from the street. That the proposed work will be designed and built in compliance with DOB regulations under the supervision of licensed engineers to protect the primary facades and adjacent buildings, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or of the historic district. Period.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Letty. Seven in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
Exclamation point. Thank you. All right. And we'll move, we're gonna now move to our public hearing agenda. We're gonna switch the order a little bit, right?
Yep. We're we're gonna swap public hearing items number one and two. So we'll begin hearing items with public hearing item number two, LPC twenty-five dash zero seven two nine zero, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block two zero three seven, lot eleven, two oh seven, West one hundred and fifty-first Street, the Harlem River Houses individual landmark. This is a housing project consisting of three groups of buildings and surrounding sites designed by Archibald Manning Brown and built in nineteen thirty-six to thirty-seven. The application is to install artwork and interpretive signage.
Ready? Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Scher from Higgins Quays Barth and Partners. We are the historic preservation consultants for Harlem River Houses. I'm joined today in person with Elliot Hutterly from Settlement Housing Fund, as well as my colleagues Esther Wagner and Ward Dennis. On Zoom, we have Rebecca Prestup from Art Bridge and Ralston Hugh from two twelve. So the proposal before you today is for new participatory artwork and signage at Harlem River Houses. This work is made possible through a grant from the Mellon Foundation and is sort of the final piece of a multi-year rehabilitation project at Harlem River Houses. As some of you may remember, the project went before you in two thousand and twenty-one. Harlem River Houses is located between West one hundred and fifty-first Street and West one hundred and fifty-third Street with McCombs Place to the west and Harlem Lane Playground to the east. It was built by the federal government for the New York City Housing Authority between nineteen thirty-six and nineteen thirty-seven. It was designed by a group of architects led by Archibald Manning Brown and included one of the first black architects that was licensed in the licensed in the United States, John Lewis. I'm sorry. John Lewis Wilson. And this was listed as an individual landmark in nineteen seventy-five. So the Harlem River Houses has been restored, all the facades have been restored, they've received all new multi-light casement windows, the landscape has been restored. The interiors of the apartments have been rehabilitated, all five hundred and seventy-seven of them. It looks amazing and we're happy to say that the New York landmarks conservancy will be recognizing this with the Lucy Moses Award in April. And so we're just happy to report the progress on this project. As part of the rehabilitation, the three extant sculptures are being restored by Jabonski Building Conservation. These are those. The the initial vision for Harlem River Houses was to integrate artwork throughout the campus. This program was led by Heinz Warnake, a WPA artist. Initially, there were seven sculptures and four murals, but only these three sculptures survive. So this was really an opportunity now that there's funding for artwork, like how how can the residents reimagine how artwork works in their home? And then, and just to point out, these are cast concrete sculptures. The two that are at the breezeways on the right and left hand side are situated on brick plinth. And here's just a detail of the restoration work happening with the mother and child with dog sculpture at Jabonski Studios. This was in the most fragile condition, so it was taken off site. The other two are being restored on site. So the locations for the artwork include at these breezeways, which are on the western side of the campus where one enters Harlem River Houses. You can see the outer walls in the center photos and the photos on the right, there are plain brick walls that have been painted historically, there were murals here. And then in the bottom left, there's a central fountain also on the western side of campus that has this Belgian black paving. There's four sculptures proposed at the edges of this Belgian black paving. These are our circa nineteen thirty-seven photos of the historic artwork, which shows the murals that were on the outer wall of the breezeway. We're not sure when these were removed, but in the early photos, they do not appear to show up. And then in the center fountain, you'll see four penguins that were around the fountain. We also are not sure when these were removed. You'll note in our proposal, the new sculptures are situated away from the fountain. This is because the residents were concerned about safety for children who use the fountain as a play space in the summer. So a plan, the red dots indicate the restored sculptures that we looked at. The blue lines are the outer walls of the breezeways where we're proposing murals. And then the yellow dots are the outside of that Belgian black, the Belgian block paving that is surrounding the the fountain. So after Settlement Housing Fund received the grant from the Mellon Foundation, they established the series of workshops with the residents of Harlem River Houses to select artists, to determine what type of art would be on the campus and where that art would be located. So there was a series of participatory meetings where Art Bridge facilitated communication between the residents and the artists. Three artists were selected and they're here. They're all Harlem-based artists, and this is examples of their work. Starting with the sculptures, we have an existing photo of the the central fountain. And here is a proposed rendering showing the the scale of the art. As you know, the commission doesn't necessarily regulate content of art, but does regulate scale, location, materiality. So this is not the final, but it's a draft design of the of the sculptures. And these are twenty-four inch cast bronze sculptures on top of a twenty-four inch Belgian block clad plinth. The twenty, the twenty-four inch high sculpture is based on what we perceive to be the historic height of the fountain sculptures, just sort of gauging from the photo. And then the plinth is 24 inches high to bring it to a point where it's no longer a tripping hazard, but also isn't too high, so it's distracting from views of the beautiful buildings and landscape. The choice to have Belgian block clad plinth is to both relate to the adjacent paving and that scale of masonry is similar to the brick plinths that we see at the sculptures that are at the breezeways. Going to the breezeway murals, we have the draft representation of what the murals look like on West 151st Street. Again, informed by residents' interest for how these portals are activated as one enters into the western campus. And then on West 153rd Street, again, these are plain brick walls and then the murals will be painted onto the walls. Moving on to signage. So now that the site has been restored and the art is going to be restored and there's going to be new art, there's this opportunity to have interpretive signage that celebrates the history of the place, its architecture, and then also the people who live there. We also have interpretive signage for the new art, the historic art, and then much-needed wayfinding signage. So that's all represented on this plan. There's 15 signs in total. The text on the signage for the history piece is also being reviewed by the residents, so it reflects their history of the site as well. So 15 signs totals. There are three different sign types and three different sign sizes, but the types and sizes aren't necessarily tied to each other, so it's just showing two pieces of information at once. We have wall-mounted signs, which are anchored through mortar joints so that they're reversible. Post-mounted signs that are situated on the ground. And then planter-mounted signs, which are inside of the existing planters. These are exploded axons of those signs. All of them will have aluminum black frame. The black relates to the painted metal work that is throughout the campus, the railings, the fences, the around the landscaping and everything like that. And then the finish of the signs will be a porcelain enamel, which is a very, it's a matte finish, but also very resilient. So, and these are examples of other porcelain enamel signs throughout the city. And with that, we're just, we're very excited to celebrate and activate Harlem River Houses as this last phase of the rehabilitation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions? Commissioner Goldblum?
Is there any lighting planned for the murals? Is there any lighting planned for the murals?
Oh, come here. Good. Just say your name first.
Hi, I'm Elliot Hutterly. I'm a senior project manager at Settlement Housing Fund. We're the owner and developer of Harlem River Houses. The question was about lighting. At the time, there's no additional lighting planned beyond the existing site lighting. There is lighting already in the breezeways, so I think that, we think that would be sufficient to light up the murals at night.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, just a comment. That's wonderful to see, especially the sculptures being restored. I was going to ask about the same question that Michael was asking about. I think these are dark passageways unless you have proper lighting and the proper maintenance. And that is my other question is the, who's maintaining?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So part of our agreement with Art Bridge, who is the group that led the participatory process to design the murals, is a maintenance contract, so they will be responsible for maintaining and upkeeping the murals in perpetuity.
Any other questions? All right, let's see. We have some public testimony, so we'll move to testimony and we'll come back to you. So we have two people who've signed in. We'll start with Sean Smith. Please come up to the podium here and we'll bring a microphone over to you.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is afternoon, right? To begin, I'm so excited about this project. I, I've been in Harlem River since I was four years old. I'm 62 now. So I've seen the changes from when I first grew up there till now. And I am so excited about what's about to take place. I love the artwork. It took me a minute to gravitate towards the sculpture because creature of habit, I'm used to the the little seals, the little turtles that I used to play on and jump on. You know, going into the big court, we call that main area, the big court. So going into the big court as a little girl, running through the sprinklers and stuff, to see it being revived again, is exciting for the newer, the younger generation coming up. And to have the history displayed, because I remember my dad used to talk. I'm sorry. I get a little emotional when I think about it. Remembering my dad telling me the history of Harlem River. And growing up, never knew it was the projects until I became an adult because of how everybody took so much pride in where they, where they lived. Neighbors looking out for each other, looking out for each other's children. I would love to see that come back. And I think this is the start of it. When you have someplace to take pride in, when you know where your people grew up and where you're from, it gives you something to stand strong. It builds a solid foundation to stand upon. And it's so important because when you know, this is my home, you know, this is where my parents and my grandparents grew up, you're more inclined to take care of it, to respect the land which you're standing on. I am all for this project. I really am. And I'm hoping that we push forward and build even greater things at Harlem River. It's a beautiful place. That's it.
That's great. Thank you very much for this very eloquent and moving testimony. All right, we're gonna now move to Jessica Lee Pellet. Sorry.
Greetings, everyone. I'm Jessica Lee Pejot. I am a resident of Harlem River and a representative of the Tenant Association. I'm the corresponding secretary. I volunteered with Art Bridge to bring awareness to my neighbors, to gather them, to participate and let their voice be heard. And it was an educational moment. We learned a lot. We exchanged thoughts and ideas. I've been, April makes 13 years that I've lived in Harlem River. And I'm a Brooklyn girl. But I always said, if I ever left Brooklyn, I want to live in Harlem. And so there's just, there's a sense of pride of the culture and the art and just being part of the project, the colors. There were people that weren't even aware that there used to be murals, but I enjoy talking to my neighbors and it was the elders. We have, Harlem River has a lot of elders and they contributed a lot of their knowledge. And I have two neighbors, both in their 70s. They raised their families. They've lived there for 40 years. And so they've told me stories. And to be part of getting everyone together is is a joyful, prideful thing for us. And having those pops of colors, restoring art. We haven't seen a mural in years. They were painted, I don't know when, but just to have that. And yes, we do have some lighting now. They did that last year. We didn't have enough lighting before. And we'll work on that, right? But I don't know what the art would look like, but I do think that perhaps a little more lighting, I don't know if the voltage can be increased. But definitely, we're grateful for more lighting around the complex and there's some other areas that I'll be writing an email about. But the art, I'm totally in supportive of it. And then the sculptures. The sculptures had mixed reviews, but I'm pro-art and safety matters. Safety matters. And I came up with the suggestion of having the sculptures a little more away from the water since the kids are running around. And so I hope that you take all of this into consideration. It's a talking piece and not just for the neighbors, but probably for the community that will be there far longer than us. And I thank you all for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair. First, we have Lucy Levine. Lucy, I'll be promoting you to panelist, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HTC is very happy to support this sensitive restoration and looks forward to the interpretive signage and community-created artwork. We note that the LPC designation report for the Harlem River Houses offers some meaningful reminders for New York as we face the current housing crisis. The report reminds us that the Harlem River Houses were financed by the Housing Division of the Federal Emergency Administration of Public Works, known as the PWA, and that, quote, "The Roosevelt Administration recognized that low-income housing was a responsibility of the government despite bitter complaints by the building and real estate interests that the government was encroaching on their domain." Government officials such as PWA Administrator Harold L. Ices effectively argued that private industry could not afford to build housing at affordable rents for low-income tenants. Indeed, the 1937 PWA brochure for the Harlem River Houses asserts that, quote, "With all the economies of large-scale construction and the benefits of low-cost financing which PWA enjoys, Harlem River Houses is only further proof that even modest low-run housing for low-income families requires assistance in some form from the government," unquote. It should be noted, the Landmarks Designation Report tells us, that when awarding construction bids to private contractors, quote, "The Housing Division of the PWA chose those private contractors who employed workmen paid at the union's scale in full, in keeping with the PWA goal of building housing projects in order to create employment and stimulate the building industry," unquote. The Harlem River Houses are a testament to what public investment and union labor can achieve, namely, housing that is both beautifully designed and truly affordable. We are grateful that this complex is landmarked so that it will receive the beautiful restoration it deserves, which the applicants are proposing today. We are also grateful that landmark designation means historical documentation because the history of this complex helps remind us that the city and the nation have offered meaningful and beautiful housing solutions in the past and can do so in the present. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will be hearing from John Graham.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. We choose to comment on this post-Victorian housing development because of its social, historical, and architectural importance and because we want to express our strong support and appreciation for the proposed work. First, however, we want to point out the spectacular effect of the new multi-light casement windows that closely replicate the originals. These new windows replaced inappropriate double-hung windows, what a difference they make. This is a lesson in the importance of retaining or replicating original window designs on historic buildings of any style. An application later today for 167 West 72nd Street will give the commission an opportunity to apply this lesson. The proposed restoration of important original artwork at the complex is commendable. The new sculptures and murals proposed are well-sighted and scaled to the site and are in the spirit of its original artwork. They will be appropriate additions. Finally, the simple design of the proposed interpretive signs is appropriate stylistically to this modern-style housing development, and the porcelain enamel finish is the most legible and durable available. We haven't reviewed individual locations, but from what we can see, the signs are well-placed and won't overwhelm the site. Most importantly, the information they provide will help residents and visitors understand the history and importance of Harlem River Houses and hopefully develop pride and place. This kind of information is too scarce at historic sites in the city. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing that, I'll turn it to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you. All right, so it's all supportive testimony, so congratulations. I don't know if we have any final questions for the applicants? All right, so we might just move to our discussion then. So Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And I want to thank everyone who spoke today. I think that it's just really a testament to how architecture and art have a real place in our minds and memories. And it's very moving to hear that. And so we're looking at this proposal to install new art, including sculptures and murals. And as as was actually noted earlier, we don't regulate the content of art, but we do regulate size, placement, materiality, and we'll have a discussion on those aspects of this application. Commissioner Luthy, would you like to start this one?
I have to say I'm sort of speechless a little bit. This present, what's happened here at Harlem River Houses is amazing. It's a beautiful, beautiful complex of affordable housing. I wish, I can only wish that we could have more of it in our city. But it's fantastic that it's been wonderfully preserved and that it's an individual landmark. I agree with Sarah. It was very moving to hear some of the residents speak and it's amazing that there's an opportunity here to restore art that was found, that is whatever is left. It's incredible. And that art will be installed in places where it was once originally. I, in terms of the murals in the breezeways, they're not only vibrant and beautiful, but they're in areas where murals were originally. So it's kind of, it's absolutely fantastic that there's going to be something colorful and reflective of life there. And it's also terrific that Art Bridge has been hired to maintain these murals. So I was so glad to hear that information. Likewise, it's great that there are going to be new sculptures. It's wonderful that there was a competition to select them at their local for all of the art. And this idea of placing the murals adjacent to the fountains for for security reasons, I think it's a perfectly legitimate idea and I can support it. And I appreciate the material that was used on the plinths and I'm okay with the size. I think that all works. And I'm always an advocate for well-done signage. There's not that much of it, but it's well-designed and it's going to communicate important information. The structures that they're placed on are also simple and attractive.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks. I agree wholeheartedly with what Jeanne just said. This, this project really makes me want to cry. It's so, so moving, so important. The testimony, if you could just bottle what was said and kind of package it, we would be, you know, there's so much- you know, there's so much about it that speaks to the importance, not only of preservation in people's lives, but of architecture in people's lives, of the role that social housing can have in people's lives. Public housing has such a bad rap and it really does, it really, it really is awful. You know, you go to a place like Vienna, you see the glories of, of, of social housing. And you say to yourself, this is a project that should have, as its kind of subtitle, this is what could have been. This is what could have been in the United States, in New York City, if public housing got the dignity and respect and funding, just a smidgen more funding. How much did it cost to rusticate the base of those buildings? How much did it cost to throw a couple of concrete, you know, buy some, buy some art from people? It was, it's, it's so immeasurable, the value of this, the quality of the housing, both from a planning level up to a detail level. It's just, it makes you want to cry at what's been lost and what could have been. So it's, it's a blessing that this project is being preserved. It's, it's a blessing that the residents are involved in it and can feel that social housing is responsive to their needs and, and desires. And the, the gentleness, the humanity of the project is enhanced so dramatically by the presence of the artwork, old, restored, and new. It just, it's, it's, it's more, appropriate is not a strong enough word.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
I couldn't agree more with all the comments. You know, and to think that these were built during the Great Depression in the 1930s. And, you know, and the power of art and just a little bit, as Michael says so eloquently, just a little bit of touch, you know, a little touch. And to abdicate our responsibility for housing for more than half a century, now we're playing catch-up everywhere, right? We have, I just had the EDC morning conference, we're getting half a million additional students that are coming in to, to want to live in this city and we have no place to put them. And that, and that's additional million that want to work in here, and that's a million. And so, and to think about, you know, when we study, one of the most successful model is Rockefeller Center and what a little touches of, you know, art and murals and sculptures can do wonders and to generate a powerful economic and humane place and, and more importantly, a decent roof over your head.
Vice Chair Bland?
Hard to top, but no need to top the articulate little statements we've just heard from Commissioners, but also from, through testimony from residents there. But I'll just simply note that I don't think in history, this is a wild statement, has there ever been a better match between architecture, art, and sculpture than the art of the 30s, the Art Deco? There's something just intrinsic about, look at those sculptures, they're so architectural. Maybe that's a sad statement coming from an architect, but nonetheless, I think it's a, just a totally beautiful match. And what's being proposed here, of course, is wonderful too.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree with what my public commissioners have said. And I just think this is just, you know, a great example of public housing and what it can be. And artwork is always a fine addition to, to architecture. And the statues and murals being proposed here, I think are terrific. And the signage is going to be very wonderful to have here, to have as a reference and give the historic context to what's going to be installed. So it's totally in the tradition of the Harlem River Houses. And it's also been worked out with the community, as is obvious from the testimony. And I just think that's a perfect match, so I'm very happy to see it.
All right. I think we have a consensus. Commissioner Lutfi, would you make the motion?
Oh, also, congratulations on the Lucy move. Yes, that's amazing. Okay, in the matter of docket 25-07290, 207 West 151st Street, Harlem River Houses, individual landmark. A housing project consisting of three groups of buildings and surrounding sites designed by Archibald Manning Brown and built in 1936 to 37. The application is to install artwork and interpretive signage. I recommend approval finding. Wait, staff notes that the proposed murals and statues will be in keeping with the cultural history of Commission public artworks at the Harlem River Houses over time, beginning in the 1930s. That the proposed murals will be located at breezeways adjacent to 151st and 153rd Streets, which historically had murals. That the proposed statues will be located adjacent to the central fountain, where historic statues were once located, but they will be shifted away from the water feature to address modern safety concerns. That the statues will be placed atop Belgian block plinths that harmonize with the paving material found around the fountain. That installing a limited number of interpretive signs throughout the complex will enhance the public's knowledge of the history of the Harlem River Houses and will not overwhelm or detract from the significant features of the landmark. That the material and finish of the signage is typical of interpretive signage found at historical and cultural sites throughout the city. And that the proposed work will enhance the public's experience of the site and knowledge of the history of the Harlem River Houses, individual landmark.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland? Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi? With six in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming today. All right, so Commissioners, it's 1 o'clock. We're going to break for lunch now. We'll come back in a half an hour and we'll resume with public hearing item number one and then move to public hearing item number three. And we'll ask all members of the public who are on the Zoom to voluntarily exit the meeting at this time so that you don't have technical difficulties should you wish to.